Good evening, I'm going to call the City Council meeting of March 2nd, 2021 to order. Madam Clerk, can you take the roll call?
Councilmember Duncan. Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember No Block.
Yeah.
Mayor Potem James.
Here.
And Mayor Ward.
Present. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
No, we don't.
Okay, I would just ask a question of Mr. Smith. There is a late-breaking item that I would like to add to the City Council agenda. Can I do that now so that when we come back in, we can take that up? I would like to do it under Toll Road comments or the Toll Road update.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, you could do that. It would take a four-fifths vote to find that it came to your attention after the posting of the agenda and that it cannot wait till your next meeting. And then you can make it on it when you come back.
Thank you. So, Council, this is agendizing a letter to support SB 760 and 761. And it's timely to do it tonight and not wait two weeks. We need to start getting the public apprised of this bill for us and writing letters. So I would like to agendize that. And I think the Toll Road update is the best place for the public to hear this.
Excuse me, Mayor Ward, if I may?
Yes, please.
Thanks. I never received these bills to review the bill text for this legislation from staff. Did staff provide that to you?
Mr. Sun?
Okay, because I didn't receive it.
Mr. Sun, did you send that out?
All the council members about an hour and a half before the council meeting.
Oh, well, I work full-time, so I didn't get to see that. But I'm not prepared to make a decision on that tonight because I'm sure I'll appreciate those and support those. But I like to be sure and read those first, so thank you.
Well, let's still take a vote to see if we can do that. Otherwise, maybe we can come up with a compromise of how we do it. So, Madam Clerk, will you take a vote on that?
We don't have a motion and a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was my request. That is the motion to agendize that as a late-breaking item.
I'll second that.
Under discussion, I have a question for the City Manager.
Sure. This is okay, Scott, for us to talk about it?
Not whether to add it, certainly, because you've got to make those findings.
Thank you.
Do you have a copy of that legislation with you tonight? A hard copy that you can circulate?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to see it. I haven't looked at my city phone in an hour and a half, so.
Okay, I'll make copies for the council members that are present. Yeah, hard copies.
Okay. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Duncan. Councilmember Ferguson.
No, I'm not prepared to vote on that.
Councilmember No Block.
Aye.
And James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
That carries four to one.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Sun, you know, I'm going to count on you to do a commentary on that for the update. All right, so I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Oh, Mayor, there are a couple of disclosures that we have to make. You do that. Would that be okay to do that at this time?
Thank you.
Actually, City Attorney Mayor Ward, may I go first?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. There's a few items here that I need to state and recuse my participation in tonight. Under Item C for closed session, it's called, case name is Anthem Sales and Management LLC. I had recused myself from that a year ago, so I make sure to continue to do so. And then, under Section D, Conference with Real Property Negotiations, I would like to make a notation that, based on the City Attorney's advice, that we can have a discussion based on my counsel comment recommendation that was supported by Councilmember Duncan, to have the hospital matter on the public only pertaining to that $15,000 a month that will be triggered when the standstill agreement ends on March 15th and a discussion on options for how to avoid that $15,000 cost, which included a possible resoning. So that was that one. And I don't know why it didn't end up on the agenda, but the City Attorney found a workaround for us tonight to do that. And then lastly, Mayor Ward, is Section H for conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. That's on here for the fourth time. And I previously recused myself from the whole item. And I will be bifurcating that so that I can participate in the potential censure discussion for the removal of that, but not the legal fees in which there's a financial benefit, of course, for that. It's because my point is, I had participated in my censure hearing and I participated in the vote in the censure hearing. Of course, I voted no on being censured, but I'm entitled to vote in closed session based on this item being reconsidered for a possible avoiding or rescinding of that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Smith, would you please opine on the last item for clarification of bifurcating?
Oh, yeah, maybe. Let me think about that. I think I understand the thesis. And we'll have some time. That'll be, thank you, Laura, at the last of the meeting. So by the time we get to that section in closed session, let me think about how we could do that. I imagine it's possible on the lines Councilmember Ferguson said. I do need to disclose also, thanks, Councilmember Ferguson, you stole my thunder on the topic.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
That's all right. Better safe than sorry. I wanted to point out that, under initiation of litigation, the potential respondent to that litigation is Memorial Care Hospital. That has to do with the possibility envisioned in that settlement agreement of initiating condemnation action. That could be part and parcel of discussing Item D. I did, thanks for the heads-up from Councilmember Ferguson and Councilmember Duncan over the weekend. The settlement agreement contains a standstill agreement that expires this spring. And they did want to discuss that publicly. That can be done, especially because we've linked the settlement agreement there. We didn't call that out separately. But that portion of it, to the extent that it doesn't disclose negotiating a strategy, which I don't anticipate it will, can be discussed separately on the motion of two members. So thanks for indulging me on that. And that will cover both the closed-session discussion and I think what you contemplated talking about publicly.
Mr. Smith, where would that be in the agenda that we have that discussion?
You know, that's up to you and the two, I think, Mayor. Whenever you, either as part of our closed-session report, which is kind of what I had in mind, but you could also have it under council comments.
I think it would be better under closed-session report. You know, while it's all fresh in our mind, we just discussed it, so.
Okay, that works for them.
All right, so do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Potem James, second by Councilmember No Block.
Councilmember Duncan. Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember No Block.
Aye.
Mayor Potem James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Three, five votes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, so I will open the public session of our meeting. Councilmember Duncan, would you care to do the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, with very honour, for which we stand, and under God, in this world.
I'm sorry, everyone, I was dropped off, so. Councilmember Noblock, I know this is last minute, but would you grace us with an invocation?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, Lord, we ask you to be with us this evening. Lord, you say that you give wisdom to people that ask, so we ask for your wisdom in the decisions we make this evening. Lord, help us. Lord, help us to be good servants for the people of San Clemente. Guide us, give us insight and courage to do what's right. At all times, we give you Thanksgiving glory, praise, and honor because you are worthy. We ask these things in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus. Amen.
Amen, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Councilmember Duncan. Councilmember Ferguson?
Here.
Councilmember Noblock?
Here.
Here for Tim James?
Here.
And Mayor Ward?
Here.
First item on the agenda is a toll road update and consideration supporting AB 760 and 761 Bates that was added to the agenda earlier.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can you just, I don't know if IT can raise the volume for you, it's a little low. So tonight, we do have a late-breaking item of Senate Bill 760 and 761, and I would ask the city manager if he could give an update on those.
Mayor, while Eric's doing that, could I just suggest that this was distributed to the council earlier today? Members of the public that want to see the bill information can Google California Legislative Information and type those bill numbers in, then they can follow along with the council.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And before we do that, I know Madam Clerk announced it, did we have another item that we wanted to talk about out of closed session? Councilmember Ferguson? We have talked about-
We did.
Yes, go ahead.
We sure did. There's an item, and I'll also be talking about it when we address the minutes tonight that I'm going to poll, is at the February 16th meeting, under Council comments, I had suggested that the city councils have on its next agenda, this one in open session, the discussion about the hospital standstill agreement with Memorial Care between Memorial Care and the City of San Clemente, and that's set to expire in mid-March, March 15th, this month, 2021, in which a cost of $15,000 a month will be triggered and the city will be responsible for that. So, to my knowledge, we don't have $180,000 a year budgeted to pay for an empty building that's boarded up for the last five years, so I wanted to bring that to the attention of city council tonight to discuss that, discuss any potential options that council would have to be able to avoid such a cost that would be triggered in less than two weeks. That said, Councilmember Duncan, I'm just talking, I'm recapping what I had proposed at that meeting, because that's not what was on the agenda tonight for people watching. The agenda did not in open session include that, which was specific, and Councilmember Duncan had supported me on that. So that's the item. I want to have a little discussion on that. I have some comments of my own, just regarding why I would like to see us avoid that cost, just because we're fiduciary agents of the organization here running the city, and the fact that some people in the public may not know, but we have a wonderful healthcare model that's in the permitting process for the last year that will be opening at the San Clemente outlets called Exair Urgent Care, which is a ER model, it's staffed with ER doctors, and it's an ER alternative, I should say, and would really take care of about 80% of the cases that would normally go to an emergency room, so wanted to mention that. So that's really important. If, in fact, there isn't an opportunity to have a hospital emergency department there, we have an alternative that is coming to town, which hasn't been widely known. So, is there any discussion from council members that would like to participate in that, because I'd certainly like to hear what you all have to say?
Any other, any council member would like to make a comment? Could you just kind of hold up your hand? Mr. Duncan? Go ahead. Chris, can you hear me? Go ahead. Chris?
Might not have been on.
Get close to the microphone.
Is it on now?
I can hear you.
Yeah, I wanted to, thank you, Mayor Ward, I wanted to agree with Councilmember Ferguson. I think it's important that the public be reminded, if they did not already know, that there is an agreement in place wherein the city will start to be responsible for reimbursing some maintenance costs. That may not be publicly known. I'm on the hospital subcommittee with Mayor Pro-Tim James, and we are, we're working essentially to do our due diligence, explore all possible options, and make sure that we, you know, we finish that task before, I think, the city decides ultimately which way we're going to go. I would not want to discuss those options, because that's confidential information about, you know, what the city is doing, but just to let the public know that we are working diligently to, you know, to make sure that we weigh all options, we get all information before the city ultimately decides what to do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor Ward?
Yes.
Follow-up, thank you, Councilmember Duncan, excellent comments, and thanks for supporting me to have this public portion of discussion for tonight. I did want to note, too, publicly, that this, not only this $15,000 trigger, but costs, you know, we continue to pay costs to the city attorney's law firm, which is a partner, BB&amp;K. We've paid about, a little over $900,000 so far for this endeavor, and over $50,000 in consultant fees, so the costs continue to go up, and that's really important for us to realize, and take that into account as we move forward with this. So, I'm not going to, we're not going to make a motion on this tonight, I'm not, but I would like to see us change the zoning, so it reverts back to its original zoning, I believe, with C3 five years ago, and let Memorial Care do what they want with their property, which-
Mr. Smith? Excuse me, one second.
That's my opinion.
Are we able to talk about that? I don't believe a council member's supposed to say ahead of time what they're going to vote on.
That, I think, an individual opinion about how she would like that to play out is just fine, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you. Laura, I was doing that for your protection.
Thank you, Mayor Ward, yeah, but everybody, it's well widely known that that's, that was part of my platform when I had run for office, so it's very much my opinion and widely known by all, but thank you, Mayor Ward, for looking out for me.
All right, so seeing no more comments, we are on Item A, which is a toll road update. And I would ask the interim city manager, Mr. Sund, if he would give us a synopsis of the two bills, SB 760 and 761.
Thank you, Mayor Ward, council members, Eric Sund and Trump City Manager. So, for some council members, if you recall, on March 2nd, 2020, the city council took under consideration the support for Assembly Bill 3331, which was reflective of the state highways and the state route on 241, and Senate Bill 1373, which was public resources in terms of San Clemente road construction. We, at that time, took a position of support on both of those bills. That was during the 2020 legislative calendar year. Those bills, for various reasons, did not move forward, and now, recently with this legislative calendar for 2021, Senator Bates has introduced Assembly Bill 760. Excuse me, Senate Bill 760 and Senate Bill 761. These are basically redos of the previous bills that had been done in 2020. Specifically, as the agenda points out, Senate Bill 760, existing law establishes the state highway system throughout the state and designates state route 241 from state route 5 south of the city of San Clemente to state route 91 in the city of Anaheim. This bill would delete the state highway system, the portion of the state route 241 from state route 5 south of the city of San Clemente to Oso east of the city of Mission Viejo. Senate Bill 761, in essence, preserves the open space that was voted by the city of San Clemente residents, Measure V, to ensure that there is no potential expansion in the city's open space zone with 761. This is consistent with the city of council's position on protecting the city of San Clemente from any potential impacts from a toll road expansion. We brought this to you because these bills were introduced on the 19th of February, right before the deadline for the legislative calendar for 2021, and much like what we did in the previous legislative year, we created a letter of support and communicated to our residents the city council's position, as well as encouraging residents to support the bill and send that to the state Capitol's office. And so, tonight, before you were asking for the same support from the city council on these two bills, and then we would move forward with a letter of support, both from the city council officially taking in the position, and then also communicate to the residents if they wanted to take a position of support as well. I stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
City council, is there any questions or comments?
Just that it's an excellent, just that it's an excellent bill, I'm delighted that our senators introduced them on our behalf, and I'll be willing to support a motion to endorse them.
Okay, Councilmember Ferguson?
Thanks, Mayor Ward. Yes, I just wanted to comment that it sounds good, I haven't seen the bill text, I'm just surprised it came to us just an hour and a half before the meeting. I do know a press release went out about it last week, but I just didn't have a chance to go dig up the bill text, but it would have been nice to have before tonight, but it sounds positive and supportive idea for our efforts. However, Mr. Sund, are we assured that San Clemente's open space is protected with these bills?
I would defer to the city attorney, who was instrumental in this language. Scott, would you be able to update the council members?
Yeah, the, thanks for that question, Mayor and council, the core component of the bills looks at open spaces protected either by mitigation agreements, and there are plenty of those that could be implicated by a freeway through San Clemente. Most of the open space that you see in the foothills is protected under those agreements. The other facet of protection is for open spaces protected by local initiative, and so because we have a lot of open space, well, virtually all of our open space was protected by Measure V, when the voters passed it, all of that would come under the protection of this measure.
Okay, thank you, city attorney, I do have a follow-up, please, if I may. The county, if they, the county, we know, would build a road through our open space, but because the county isn't subject to the Measure V, and as we know, the portion of the LPPE comes just about 800 feet, I believe, into our jurisdictions in San Clemente, but what about, like, the toll road agencies? Okay, so are they similar, say, in that same position as the county? Like, would that Measure V, would they be subject to that in development, like the county isn't, but would a TCA that into TB?
That's an issue of contention between the city and the TCA. Whatever the case, any roadway or freeway that has to tap into San Clemente streets, and our position needs an encroachment permit, so that lasts, if not the last 100, 800 feet, then certainly the encroachment into any connecting city street would require city approval. But I don't, I can't tell you that all parties agree to that position, because there's been a lot of dispute over those very issues.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
So, I would add, as the director, your representative on the 241, that when the Mayor Pro-Tim and I spoke to Supervisor Bartlett, she reiterated to us that the county's authority ends at La Pata. They have no ability to build anything through our city past that. So, I thought that was great information, I think we already kind of knew it, but it was, it was nice that she, she gave us that info. Certainly, I echo Councilmember Noblock's comments, that we appreciate the senator taking this issue on and protecting our open space. It has always been very important, the open space to San Clemente, and the second half of our city was all planned with open space in mind, and as Mr. Smith said, a lot of that is mitigation land, it's already mitigation for the existing development that is there, it can't be moved, because it's, it's that spot that is mitigation for, say, like Forester Ranch, things, developments like that. So, it's always been our contention that, that a roadway couldn't go through land that's already protected, is already mitigation land, it can't be moved to somewhere else, since it's, it's very specific to the development we have in that part of the city. We have great support from the residents for protecting our open space, it's very valuable to the quality of life in our city. So, one of the things that I would like to add is that we do not hear very much from the commercial business owners of our city, and I'm not sure they realized that if the toll road was able to come through and had connected at Pico, that there would have been complete takes of commercial areas on El Camino Real, and one of them would have been Ralph's Supermarket in Southwest, Zebra Coffee, and the burger place after that, those were gone, and that was going to be a widening of the freeway in order to accommodate a toll road. So, the business community greatly enjoys the, what we have in our city and what makes it special, and that adds to people wanting to come here and spend time and spend their money. So, if anyone could assist in speaking to the business community, I think that would be appreciated, I think it would be important to have those businesses speak up. I can provide what, the, the information from the prior central alignment that TCA looked at, that was basically what they kind of were coming back with again, just to give you how many takes of personal property and commercial property it would have done, and I think the business community needs to know how much the city and the council protected them in that. So, I would ask for help from that, and I will provide that info to the, to the city council for that. But I certainly am supportive of these bills, and, and I'd like to see the residents write in for support, and so it's going to be very important, Mr. Sund, that we have the exact address and person of those, who those letters should go to. So, I would ask you to try and get that, so that we, we know they're going to the correct source.
Absolutely will, Mayor.
Okay, is there any other comments?
Yes, Mayor Ward.
Yes, go ahead.
Just to say, I know I'm personally going to do everything I can to support these bills, I encourage everyone else to do so as well, and I hope that when they pass, it's the first step towards eliminating the TCA altogether by finally putting a limit on what they're supposed to do and getting them back to their original mandate of building these freeways and then dissolving so that they become free.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Pro-Tim.
Are we going to vote on, are we going to have another vote on this tonight, or on, on the letter, or is what we took previously suffice?
I think what we're doing is just a vote on authorizing the mayor to sign a support letter, take that position. So, is there anyone that would like to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the letter, the mayor to author a letter in support of SB 760 and SB 761.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mayor Pro-Tim James, second by Councilmember Noblock.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock?
Aye.
Mayor Pro-Tim James?
Aye.
And Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Carrie Spivey.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So, I, can I talk about, can I talk about the External Affairs Committee of the TPA for a moment?
Sure.
So, the toll roads continue to be a clear and present danger to our city. Have no doubt, city store north, TCA directors from Rancho San Margarita, Mission Viejo, and Yorba Linda are hell-bent on designs to drive a scar of concrete and steel through our city. Last week, the External Affairs Committee of the TCA voted unanimously to oppose Senator Bates's bills, SB 7- Bates's bills, SB seven sixty and seven sixty-one, which would have protected our city's open space and would have precluded a toll road from being built through our city. During deliberations, Mayor Tony Beal of Rancho San Margarita accused San Clemente of trying to be a special interest. Mayor Beal, I say, San Clemente is special, and we do have an interest, and that interest is preventing that toll road from coming through our city. This is even more disconcerting when one considers that his wife, Jennifer Beal, a longtime proponent of ruining our city with a toll road, now serves as the chief of staff for Assemblywoman Lori Davies. There is indeed a tangled web. This city will not fall victim to the crony capitalism of longtime political operatives with their hands at the trough of the taxpayer. Although Supervisor Bartlett voted to oppose Pat Bates's bill, she personally came to City Hall, whereupon Mayor Ward and I had a very productive conversation with the supervisor. I thanked Supervisor Bartlett for carving out two hours to spend with us. She stated she understood our position, and she feels as we do. The litigation must end, and San Clemente must be protected. Again, I want to thank Lisa for lis, listening to us. Recently, this council voted to approve the Lost Petronas Parkway extension. We did this as an act of good neighborhood, of being good neighbors to our friends. TCA's latest move to oppose SB seven sixty and seven sixty-one leaves us with but one option. I will be making a motion to appeal, to repeal our approval of LPPE. And I propose we agendize that discussion for reconsideration on April the sixth, two thousand and twenty. My motion is as follows. It is our request that Rancho Mission Viejo issue, issues a strong letter of support for SB seven sixty and seven sixty-one. It is our request, and we discussed this with Supervisor Bartlett, that Supervisor Bartlett convinces, convinces the TCA boards to issue resolutions stating that no toll road would be built or considered for the foreseeable future by the TCA south of the, south of the Oso Parkway. And three, the TCA agrees to enter into discussions without a lawyer, without attorneys, with our toll road subcommittee. This gives all parties ample time to make the appropriate adjustments. If all conditions are met, I will gladly withdraw my motion to reconsider. If not, we can move forward on April the sixth with the motion to reconsider and repeal a vote on how the majority, and vote on how the majority of council wants to proceed.
Is there a council member that would like to second that motion? I will actually, I'll second that motion. It's not until the April sixth meeting, is that correct, Mayor Proten?
Correct.
Okay. And so intervening, you know, we hope that that will not be agendized. Okay, so it only takes, it takes two to do that, so I'll agree for that to be agendized.
Excuse me, Mayor, for a reconsideration, it requires a vote.
Um, it seemed like it was a, a new item because of all of the other aspects. So I'd, I'd ask Mr. Smith, can you just, I appreciate that Madam Clerk saying that. Is this, is this a reconsideration, or is it something different?
I think what you'd be considering is a new general plan amendment to change your circulation elements, so it would be new legislation. Without a vote of three, it wouldn't be written by then, but you could revisit that between now and then.
Okay.
So I, I think it's not a reconsideration, even though Mayor Proten used that word. It would be a new resolution, amending the general plan to take that highway out.
Okay. Is there any other council member that would like to agree to a staff report? Or do they feel that just having it on the agenda is enough? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. Okay, so it'll be agendized. One thing I wanted to add to what Mayor Proten said. The city of San Clemente has been great neighbors to the region. We worked very well with the county to get Los, I'm sorry, to get La Pata built. We also honored the master plan of arterial highways and made the connection at Del Rio to La Pata. The other thing that we have done now is we have added a general plan amendment to allow for a connection from Cal Camp Road to La Pata that goes through Area Five of Rancho Mission Viejo. So I have heard comments at TCA that, I just wanted, this is just an FYI for the council, that San Clemente is trying to carve themselves out from mobility solutions for the region, and I believe that's not correct. And so I'm going to be starting to talk to other council members and bring it up at the TCA meeting, exactly what the council, or what the city has done, and the residents have done in order for, for transportation. And I see Mr. Bonniget on the call, and I know you don't like to be put on notice, but could you just give the general amount of money that the, that the council provided, the city provided for the construction of La Pata? Because I don't have that in my head.
That's a great question, Mayor Ward. I may need a minute to do recall, because that's already only a few years ago, but it seems like ancient times.
I, I'm remembering about eight hundred thousand. I don't know if it's more than that.
Well, the city provided cash contribution of maybe five hundred to eight hundred thousand. However, there was a fee program that we ended when it became not necessary, and I think through that La Pata fee program and assessments on developments primarily in the Talega area, the city and that community contributed another seven to eight million ballpark. That's my best recollection. I could confirm that if the council wishes.
I don't, but I, I just thought that if anyone else does, but I knew it was significant of what we have done in our participation for La Pata. And I just thought that that was a good comment to make after hearing in that same External Affairs Committee and TCA that San Clemente is trying to carve ourselves out with this bill, and that we're not trying to work on regional transportation. So I think this is a good discussion just to get out for the public, because I think that isn't true. And I think it's important, because, you know, we've all done the work, our staff has worked very hard on it, and the residents agreed also, and we've provided connectivity for the, the region into our city. So, thank you. I, I appreciate that. I had forgotten about the assessment. I knew there was significant amount of money. I just wasn't sure how it had happened. So thank you, Tom. Mr. Noblock?
Mayor, Mayor Proten, you have a lot of information, a lot to absorb. Could you circulate the conditions that you just outlined?
I certainly will.
So we can get a handle on those. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I will, I will provide that to the, to the city manager, and he, he can provide that to the council members.
To the council. Thank you, Mayor Proten.
Okay, thank you. So, Madam Clerk, the next item?
The next item is item one B.
Excuse me, we do have one public comment.
Thank you, please.
Excuse me, point of order, please, Mayor Ward. I raised my hand at the, just right after Mayor Proten James earlier. I just wanted to ask the interim city manager about the toll road information page. We have that toll road resources information page on the website, and when that's going to be updated.
Thank you, Councilmember Ferguson. As I'm aware, that some documents have been uploaded, and more documents are forthcoming. So it's actually being updated as we speak.
Okay, I know you promised us at the last meeting we'd have it done by the end of February, but when do you think we might get it done? Because there's so much information, and people really don't, a lot of people don't know what, what has accomplished that's been so positive in the efforts of the city of San Clemente and its community. Do you think you can get that done by the end of March?
I'm, well, I'm actually hopeful with tonight's action with the, the letters of support for SB seven sixty and seven sixty-one, that we'll be updating all of that information on there as well, so.
Oh, that'd be great, yes. We can start with the most recent, the most current, and work back if that's better. Just, it's, we just really need to, need to provide the information to the people, because it's very relevant, it's moving very fast right now. So, all right, thanks, Mr. Sun.
Public comment? Okay, this comment is from Amanda Quintanilla. Dear council members, we were all looking forward to the introduction of Senator Bates' new bills for two thousand and twenty-one. I know that our residents supported Senator, Senator Bates' SB thirteen seventy-three that was introduced last year. Recently, Senator Bates has introduced SB seven sixty and SB seven sixty-one. Upon reviewing these bills, there needs to be some clarification regarding the verbiage of the bills and what it means for our city. I know that the city may be eager in sending a support letter. However, as they stand, it might revive some alternatives that we brought that, that we thought were discarded. I certainly don't want the destruction of homes, businesses, churches, and schools. It is my understanding that Senator Bates and staff are aware of these concerns regarding the text. I was informed that these bills will be reviewed by the Senator's office, just in case for clarification or alteration of the text, text is needed. I certainly appreciate all the hard work and dedication that Senator Bates has done in helping our South Orange County residents. As some of you know, I spoke in support of SB thirteen seventy-three, and as a longtime resident, I want to make sure that the safety and well-being of my hometown San Clemente is protected. I hope that the city will hold off on sending a support letter until there is clarification from Senator Bates. I appreciate your time and consideration regarding this matter. And that's it for public comments on this item.
So, Mr. Sun, we can, before this ends out, we, we can definitely talk to Senator Bates and see what the concern is.
Absolutely, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Next item is item one B, homeless issues, city net update.
So, Councilmember, Mayor and Councilmembers, Eric Sun, interim city manager. We have Brad Fieldhouse from CityNet who will be providing the report for the month of February. Just as a side note, on your agenda tonight, on the consent calendar, there's a agenda report asking for an extension for CityNet for one month, which would be March. As we've talked about in previous agenda report discussions, the city is in the process of recruiting a community outreach worker, and the city is retaining CityNet through March with the hopes that when that service is done, we'll have a community outreach worker to pick up where CityNet left off. But tonight, Brad will be just focusing on the February reports and take any questions from the city council. Brad, if you would, please.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me? Just make sure.
Yes.
You good?
Yes, thank you.
Yep. Good evening, Mayor Proten and council members. And, yeah, as Eric said, I'm here to give a quick report. So for those of you who don't know or are listening in or watching along, I'm the executive director of CityNet. Since two thousand and nineteen, we are a full-service homeless agency. We've been serving as one, not the only, but the primary outreach and case management nonprofit for the city of San Clemente. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to come and share at tonight's council meeting about this important and often challenging work of partnering with the city to care for some of your most vulnerable community members. I was actually here, January nineteenth was the last time I was here, to give an update, sort of the, the year-end data. And we're still wrapping up our February results, which we always do in the first five days of the month. We kind of tie up all the loose ends and make sure all of our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. And we do, as we've always done, submit by around the seventh of every month, a dashboard that the city presents, which sort of tracks all of our data that I've referred to at these council meetings numerous times. And so there are still a few kind of loose ends, but I do have some preliminary numbers to word up, report out tonight. So using sort of the format that would be familiar for those of you that are listening in, that would know the context and how we report out, we did have two hundred and five additional outreach contacts in the month of February. Again, those can be duplicate numbers. They, they do represent sort of meaningful and significant interactions where we are working in a social work context to get actionable information in partnership with homeless friends, more than just sort of a simple hello. This is actually, you know, it's such a sit-down conversation. We still do have thirty-four individuals. That is an accurate number still that are in active case management. Most of those folks are on the streets, or in some, and, and a number of them are in some sort of bridge situation where we're still connected to them, helping them take additional next steps. I do not have, as of tonight, a final tally of street exits for the month of February, which is the number we typically report out on sort of situations that individuals were on the streets, they, they've left the streets in either a permanent end or some temporary capacity with a, at least a three-month window of possibility before them. And as, as we just referred to, we, we are, our original contract did end in February, and we are looking at that potential one-month extension that's on the conversation for tonight. But as you can imagine, we are, we definitely are still out, doing outreach, visiting all the hotspots on a weekly basis, but much, much of our most recent work is tightening up our case management, document readiness, making sure that we complete the project, obviously inform our clients out on the streets that there's going to be a transition. We are still an agency that works very actively across the county, but there's going to be a possible transition in terms of case management. We will no longer be their primary case management link. So really, if there's sort of a theme to my message, and just kind of my quick update tonight is to, to assure you as the council, city staff, and the public, that, you know, all of our work, for those of you who may not be connected to this topic of homelessness, our work, we are part of a coalition of agencies all across this county, where we all collectively work and put all of our data into the county's homeless management information system, often called HMIS. And that's where a lot of our collaborative work across the counties with county agencies, private individual agencies, where we all compare notes and we work together. We have been, and we continue to put all of our sort of key data in that system, so that there's a seamless conversation around individual situations all across the county. And as we sort of kind of are obviously in that kind of wrap-up mode, I obviously want to thank the city of San Clemente for trusting us for this season to really kind of help lay a foundation and continue the work of supporting individuals. As we kind of look over here, as I kind of wrap up, I kind of look at sort of the work that's been done over, so we've been here since January, December of two thousand and nineteen, and including the February data, we've had a just shy of three thousand outreach contacts. This is more than just kind of driving around and saying hi to people. These are meaningful, as I said earlier, these are meaningful conversations where we are actually, you know, not just building trust, but building a database of information that provides actionable information to help those individuals transition from the streets. Over three thousand of those, we have, we responded directly to a hundred and thirty-eight direct calls that come into our call center. Obviously, our phone number is out there. We will continue to refer. You can rest assured that we will continue to refer anybody who calls us. We are advocates at heart, so whatever the next step is, and we can't help them, we will definitely continue to receive those calls and pass them on to whoever is assigned to be that person. And most importantly, which is sort of the significance of how we end homelessness, is actually get people off the streets and housed, is collectively, again, this isn't a complete data set, because we still have a few weeks left to go, but fifty-four individuals with ties to San Clemente have been exited off the streets since we've been around. Those, those may not be all the street exits, but those are the ones that we're aware of, because obviously we were in some way, shape or form connected to them. A good chunk of those, according to my calculations, about twenty-one of those were permanent solutions. The others are into some sort of bridge situation of a temporary nature with, again, that's not just putting them in a motel, that, that, those are actually situations in a bridge situation, a bridge to somewhere. And, and I guess my final comment is that while we may not be on the streets in a few more weeks, you have an ally in CityNet in the region. We are, you know, we are committed to solutions. We are committed to, we are involved in lots of conversations around the county, and we are committed to continue to work together to bring solutions to this homeless crisis in our state, in our county, and in, obviously, local cities continue to face. So thank you for trusting in us as an agency, and as we work with you as a city, as well as those important relationships on the streets. So that completes my update. If there's any other questions, I will entertain those, and we look forward to submitting a final report after we're done.
Thank you, Mr. Fieldhouse. Is there any questions from council? So I would say thank you very much for the time that you have spent in our city, and I do appreciate and understand your promise of continuing to partnership with us. I appreciate that very much. I do have one quick question. On weekends, what is, what is it that someone could do if they want to have some help? That that recently came to me and I wasn't able to personally answer it.
Yeah, 211 is the go-to organization. I mean, that is the database resource center where somebody can call seven days a week and get access to somebody that can connect their, connect the dots to resources that are local. So I would refer them to 211. They've got expensive website. They've also got hotline numbers that you can reach out to, but 211 is the go-to standard, sort of the 411 of all things, resources. I would refer them to there for sure.
I appreciate that. I knew about 211. I just wasn't sure that it was seven days a week. So, you know, I appreciate that. We'll try and get that information out. I'm sure most people know. I just wanted to make sure that there was some, you know, and also, you know, our sheriff's department, that they also can be reached on the weekend.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mayor Ward.
Yes.
Comments.
Okay, go ahead.
First comment from Rick Lefler. Good evening, council. It seems like the issue of homelessness in San Clemente has been out of the spotlight in recent months. I suppose this is a good thing in some ways, but there's a dark cloud on the horizon. With our cold winter temperatures and COVID emergency, we have noticed a modest decline in the number of homeless individuals frequenting our streets, especially during the nighttime hours. In the coming months, as the temperatures rise, I'm confident that our homeless population will increase substantially. At that time, I'm sure the outcry from citizens regarding our homeless population will also increase. I've recently learned that our new outreach employee will not be attending the meetings of the joint homeless subcommittee. Does this make any sense? Is the council aware of this? We were told that the reason for this was they would be too busy in the field to participate in the meeting. Seems like a ridiculous assumption, especially considering that the only only items the council left on the committee's work plan was to address infrastructure planning that will assist the outreach person when they start their new job. Our police chief, fire chief, and marine safety director all find the time to attend the public safety committee meetings and their participation is invaluable. Somehow, I doubt that our new outreach person will have, will be any busier than the three previously mentioned individuals. I would like to see the council and city management increase their energy in addressing our homeless emergency. It's time to make this issue a priority once again. A good start would be to aggressively pursue Councilmember James's plan to form a joint shelter strategy with Dana Point and San Juan with the goal of initiating a shelter on county property. I've spoken to numerous OCSD command personnel and all agreed that this would be the most attainable plan. We cannot enforce enforce anti-camping laws until we have shelter beds available, plain and simple. Councilmember James brought this plan up at council months ago. What is the status? What work has been done? The council needs to get to work or admit publicly that it has no intention to address this issue. That would be transparency. Rick Lefler. And that's it for public comments.
Um, if I may, Mayor Ward, I have a question. Um, for Mr. Sund. Mr. Sund, is what the speaker had indicated that the outreach provider that we're recruiting for would not attend these meetings? So seems so, seems so beneficial if he or she did.
So let me back up. First and foremost, the purpose of the community outreach worker is focus on mobile outreach of homelessness on the streets. Number two, the monies are funded by CBGG COVID monies and those monies have certain requirements as it relates to the COVID conditions. And so just like CityNet is providing monthly updates, I'm sure once this position gets settled into their routine and working with staff on the performance measures of getting people off the streets, et cetera, they will be reported out not only to the city council, but also to the relevant commissions and committees. But this position will be limited in their pay and the limited in the in the cost and time. So, you know, from a staff perspective, the number one priority is to have that outreach worker on the street working to connect with homeless individuals that need services and connect them to the appropriate services.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because I know that does that committee meet, by the way, once a month or is it twice a month?
I I I don't think monthly. I think it's every other month, but I.
Every other month? Yeah, it seems, okay. And so you're saying that the COVID, the COVID federal grant funding may not require or may not allow it. So there's certain requirements. Could you circulate that to us so we can see?
I'll, I would start with the gender report that was originally provided to the council that highlighted that, but if we have other documentation, we'll forward that to the council appropriately.
Oh, okay. I'll have to go back to that and take a look at it. So you circulated the requirements or the specifications of the job, not the job, but.
As a part of.
For the money.
That would be provided with the COVID grant monies.
With the COVID funds. All right, I'll take a look at that. Thanks a lot.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Probably the time has come for me to make a motion and get a second to direct staff to start working with the cities of of San Juan, Capistrano, and Dana Point on to see what those two cities appetite would be to to join us, whether it's a some sort of joint cooperation agreement or 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 JPA. But I think the time has come for us to start studying that. We've talked about it in the past, but we really didn't direct staff to do it. Additionally, I I think as electeds, we probably need to make elected-to-elected contact to start, start working on this. I think there's, there's a lot of county-owned property on on the Ortega that could, that that could be quickly converted in into emergency shelters with transportation to and from. So I am going to make a motion to direct staff to 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 reach out to the cities of San Juan and Dana Point to to study the the appetite those two cities would have in creating some sort of partnership. If I could have a second, I'd greatly appreciate.
Second.
Okay, so Gene, I would just add for discussion, this is to start the conversations. Because, okay, I think we kind of talked about that at the last meeting. So we we all agree that it's time to start picking up those conversations. So, Mr. Sund, is, do you understand that?
Absolutely, Mayor, yes.
Okay, all right. We have a motion by Mayor Protem James and a second by Councilmember Duncan.
Second by Councilmember.
Was it Councilmember Noblock?
I was prepared to second it, but I think Chris, Chris actually seconded it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock.
Aye.
Mayor Protem James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Nick Carriese Spivey.
Thank you, Mr. Fieldhouse, for joining us very much. Contact me anytime.
Yep, look forward to talking to you.
Okay.
Next item is presentation by Captain Manhart concerning annual crime statistics and an update on crime prevention.
Thank you, Mayor Ward and the city council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you guys. Want to provide an overview of the 2020 stats. I guess it would be a significant understatement to say that 2020 had unprecedented challenges with the pandemic and civil unrest. I'm going to go over some specific stats and some things that we are doing. And and at the end, if you guys have any questions, we'll, we'll go over that. Next slide, please. So there is a significant reduction in calls for services. So we dropped about 4,000, but what happened was several times during the year, a- as a result of the pandemic, we tried to limit our exposure to the community to protect the deputies, the families, and then the community by not having contact. So dispatch, and if there were other ways that we could solve the the calls that we received via telephone or or emails, we we did that. And as a result, there were, there was a reduction in about 4,000 calls that the deputies were not sent to. Now, they were not, obviously, we went to all emergency calls, all crimes, but but other calls where we we thought it would best be handled by not having the the deputies make contact with the public, we did that. And and then you see the reduction there. So we're still averaging about 28,000 calls per year, which, as I mentioned in the past couple of years since I've been here, that that we are a significantly busy city. Next slide. So, um, this is kind of interesting. So if you look at our arrests this year for 2020, we actually went up. So crime did not stop. We didn't stop working. We were challenged on many different fronts. So we actually increased our arrests. Our citations were dramatically down and that was specifically because we gave directives to our staff to to reduce the public contact during, several times during the year during the outbreak. And and that's a result of why our citations are down. We pride ourselves on on, so our response times priority one are basically any calls where the public is threatened with a serious injury or death. So our expectation in the in the 18 square miles that we have is to be there within under five minutes. And one thing that has really helped our response times with that is the the standing up the satellite station at the outlets, which helps our patrol units on the west side of the freeway respond and keep that number under five minutes. So I'm I'm very, I'm very happy with that number. It is a very large city and it does pose some challenges, but we continue to to shoot for under five minutes and and we've accomplished that. Next slide. So traffic, um, the motor deputies were also given directives throughout the year on several different occasions to reduce public contact, but however, they were also directed to be in the public and and by using their presence hopefully to deter traffic violations. And and you can see through this, unfortunately, we did have three fatal accidents, but the injury traffic accidents were down a little bit and then the non-injury traffic accidents were down as well. And so the hazardous citations, which predominantly is carried by the 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 motors, it was down dramatically from last year, but the sole reason for that was because of the pandemic. Next slide. So this is the big one, the Part One crimes. There are eight sections of Part One crimes listed that we report to the FBI. And so from 2019 to 2020, we did have a reduction in crimes. So we were down about 54 Part One crimes, which is is our goal, right? We want to reduce crime as much as possible and this year was was extremely challenging with the pandemic and some of those other issues that we were dealing with. The larceny, the theft, larcenies, 655. I mean, that that is the bulk of what what we have going on. I'm going to get into a little bit more detail about how we can protect ourselves from that, but that has always been the the challenge that we have in the city to try to reduce that. Auto thefts significantly up from the from the past year. Residential burglaries dropped a little bit and then assaults, we we dropped a little bit there as well. Next slide. Commercial burglaries were down, which which is really nice even though the the economic challenges that we have in the community with with the pandemic, I was pleased about that. Unfortunately, robberies were one up, basically the same. And then rape was the same and then criminal homicide, we had one case in that. And so those are all the part with the eight Part One crimes that are reported to the FBI. And then we'll go into the Part Two crimes. Next slide, please. So when in 2019, we had 1,777 and then obviously for 2020, we we had two more crimes reported. So basically, we didn't, we didn't go anywhere, but added two. But we're having a significant amount of thefts and that's what what you'll see here is is wire number is there. So miscellaneous violations, those are the the public nuisance issues that the deputies are handing out citations for. That 334, significant amounts, narcotics, narcotics have always been a challenge and we don't see that dramatically shrinking. That's always going to be there. Assaults were up, but understandable based on on the challenges that the community had with with forced lockdowns and businesses not being open. It's understandable to see why that is and we would like to see that drop and hopefully we will. And obviously vandalisms will increase a little bit as well. Next slide. Embezzlement and fraud, which is expected with the challenges I mentioned, that that increased and disorderly conduct. I I expected that as well because of what we were facing. Driving while intoxicated or DUIs were up just a little bit and then weapons law violations were increased. And that was a, that was a significant number of what our deputies were able to recover. And and I think that that was important because that is directly related to public safety. Next slide, please. Liquor law violations kind of stayed the same, about 33. Forgery counterfeiting dramatically reduced, which which was good. Runaways, youth under the age of 18, we're down 27. And then drunkenness, drunk in public or unable to care for themselves, were down significantly from 43 to 23. And I believe that 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 is a result of establishments being closed. So, next slide. Stolen property reduced a little bit in that. Sex offenses dropped significantly, which is really good. And then curfew and loitering laws are basically a youth under 18. There was one, so that was a little increase on there. Next slide. Manslaughter by vehicle. We didn't have any prostitution or commercial vice. We did not have any cases this year. And then offenses against family or children, we didn't have any cases of those as well. But next slide. So as I mentioned, San Clemente is a busy city. We are the busiest city in Southwest operations. One of the busiest cities in the 13 contract cities that that we patrol. So we submitted just through San Clemente, 2,432 cases from, just from the city, which is, you know, 28% of all Southwest cases. So there are seven cities in the Southwest divisions and we were, you know, over a quarter of that. So when when people ask how busy we are, we are significantly busy. And even though we had the pandemic and civil unrest and other challenges, crime didn't stop and our investigators and the deputies have been working tirelessly to to keep the community safe. Next slide. So as I talked about, I mean, we we saw the theft numbers were dramatically high and then I talked about this last year, but but I'm I'm asking everybody in the community, we have a lot of property that is being stolen from vehicles. So please lock your vehicles. Do not leave any property that are in your vehicles. Suspects tend, when they steal credit cards, debit cards, they're they're used pretty quickly. They go to retail stores and and purchase electronic items and those types of things. So what I like to tell people is don't leave anything in your vehicle. If they go in their vehicle and you don't have any property in there, well, then then you have you have the trespassing and that kind of stuff, but but you're not losing any property and losing your wallet. For those of you that have your wallet stolen and some of your credit cards, it is just a, an uncomfortable position to be in and it it goes on for a long time. So I I'm just asking you, and I understand the convenience, you know, if you're going golfing the next day, a lot of people like to put their golf clubs in their car and get ready for the next day, or if you're going on a trip. And the problem is the criminals will will take advantage of you and it'll make it for a very difficult, difficult situation. On the thefts, a a, we have seen a dramatic increase in catalytic converter thefts from vehicles. And this is not just San Clemente, this is all of Orange County, South County, North County. Next slide. So this is what a catalytic converter is. It's basically, it's a, it's an exhaust component that that basically converts pollutant gases into those harmful ones. But what happens is the the criminals go underneath there and they will cut. They will use a sawzaw or some cutting device and cut that out. There are, there are some precious metals in there and what the criminals are doing is they are recycling those for for profit. And you will know when this is stolen in your vehicle, because when you get in, you turn it on and you're going to, your exhaust is going to be extremely loud. The problem is, is the the suspects that are involved in this behavior have traditionally, we started at night doing this and and I've gotten reports where in in public parking lots at stores that people are going underneath vehicles in broad daylight doing, taking these off. And what I'm asking the community is if you see anybody tampering or going underneath a car, you need to call us as soon as possible. It's it's a very difficult crime to catch. Those catalytic converters are not serialized, so it's imperative that that we get notified as soon as possible. So we have a significant amount of cases, just not only in San Clemente, but all our neighboring cities as well. Next slide. So one thing I wanted to bring up to you about, several years ago, we had a citizens academy and I think that this is a valuable. And I think that this is a valuable tool. Obviously last year of the pandemic and, and all the things that we had going on, there, there wasn't any way of doing this, but I'm hoping, knock on wood, that, that we have the ability to do it this year, um, with the, with the permission of the city council. And the citizens academy is designed basically to have members of the community, um, get a, an increased understanding of what we do. And what we do is we, we take them to our laser village. We do training, um, with our driving simulators and, and our, uh, the, the tools that we use. They go to the jails, to where the coroner's office, all kinds of things to get knowledge of what we do and what we ask is, is for the, then return to the community and, and share the knowledge. And I, and I think it's a great tool. Unfortunately, like everything that, that that we do in life, it costs money and, and I just wanted to throw this out to the city council for a discussion. If this is something that we would like to start back up, it was a very successful program three, four years ago. Um, we kind of straight away from that from, because we had other challenges of losing our station and that kind of stuff, but it's something that I would like to bring back and, um, um, the, the person who would be in charge of this is, uh, our crime prevention specialist, Lisa Lebron Flores. And it's, it's a massive undertaking, but I think it's, it's vital to the city. And, um, if you guys have questions about that, I know, uh, Laguna Niguel has a very successful program in, uh, Mission Viejo. Um, and I can get you guys financial quotes of what they're paying and if we can, we can basically depending on how much it costs or how much you guys want to pay for, we can curtail the, the experience, uh, to the community for that. And on that note, so Lisa Lebron Flores, she's our current prevention specialist. Obviously we hired her last year. Well, during the pandemic, um, unfortunately we, we, we can't have in-person neighborhood watch meetings. We did a couple of virtual of neighborhood watch meetings and those are, those are difficult and we have another one scheduled. Hopefully here's around the corner that if we can start meeting in, in person, we'll definitely ramp those up. Um, one thing that she has planned, uh, the national night out is a celebration for law enforcement and it's usually on, um, the date is August the third, but the problem is on August third, multiple cities have, have the celebration. So we have resources that come out for the, for the community to see. Well, on the third, some cities are fighting for that. So what I've done is I decided on, on July thirty-first, which is a Saturday. Um, we are going to have a, a tremendous amount of resources come out here. We're going to have the helicopter fly in, land, we're going to have the, uh, harbor patrol is going to tug a boat over here for us, or the bomb squad, canines, all, all the resources that we have, which you guys saw on display during some of the civil unrest. But it, it's going to be at the visitor for most of sports park. Uh, we're working with Samantha Wiley right now. Um, and I think it'll be a great, great effort. So Lisa, Lisa's been putting that together and, uh, it, it will be, I assure you, it will be the biggest turnout for any contract city in, uh, in Orange County and I'm, I'm very proud about that. So, so the plan is on July thirty-first to have that. And, um, at that point, uh, do you, does anybody have any questions for me?
And Mayor, I have some, I have a few questions.
Before you do that, Mayor Protem, can I ask IT to clear our screen, I, of the PowerPoint? Thank you. Um, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Uh, National Night Out, National Sponsor that's Target Stores, is that correct? Or is that not correct? So I'll go on to the next question. Um, on our part one crimes, uh, Ed, I think one thing would be difficult for the people watching at night, understand what, number one, what part one crimes are. And the second questions I had, I have with part one crimes, do you monitor that with the DA's office on, on what part one crimes are, are being prosecuted, what's not being prosecuted, uh, what's, what's downgraded?
So what we're doing is, um, the, our investigators, our, our division for the Southwest investigations, what, what's happening is we are taking a deep dive in exactly what you're talking about, about all the cases that, that we've accumulated. And we're going through each one of them and finding out, um, if they were prosecuted, if they, if they pled down or if, if they weren't filed, why weren't they filed? Was it something on our end that we could have done better? Was it something where the district attorney, uh, their office decided not to do that? I don't have those answers now, but I do know that that, that is the directive from our division and we are doing research on that.
Great. And then the, the, my, my next, my next and final question, um, is I really like the concept of, of the citizens academy. And I'm just wondering, you know, I would like to get some cost on what that citizen, citizens academy would cost. But I'm wondering if we could, you know, do a citizens academy with San Juan, Dana Point, San Clemente, and then some of the fixed costs we, we, we could, we could push across the, the three cities rather than just one city.
Um, I'll go, anything's, we, we can talk about anything. I can tell you that, that Laguna Niguel, don't quote me on this, but they, they spend anywhere between twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a year on the project and, and it's pretty elaborate. Um, they, they get a lot of, uh, they get notebooks, jackets. It's, it's, it's pretty neat. Um, but, but that is, I mean, we could do, we could do anything that you want. I mean, we want to cut some things out. The, one of the, the, the fixed costs that you're talking about, the staff that's going to be doing the training, it's on overtime. It, it, it's not, you know, come on while we're working and you can kind of sit around. So we got to kind of schedule that we, and, um, that, that's kind of a little bit of a challenge, but that's what it is.
And then my final question is, uh, do you, do you track the effectiveness of, of your crime prevention coordinator or officer, whatever? And would we be, be better off with an additional community service officer?
Uh, no, and I'll tell you why. Um, so you have posted on the city website, a, uh, one of our, it's our annual review. We're putting another one together. I think it was like thirty-nine pages was last year's. I don't know what this year's going to be forty-something pages. I assure you, she's the one that put that enti- entirety together. All the stats that you just saw, that's from her. So if you're expecting me to put those stats together, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to do it in a timely manner. So she is, she is incredibly, incredibly valuable to the community.
I'm smiling.
So, um, no, um, however, I do, I do recommend, I know, uh, Eric Sun and I have had a conversation about, about getting another CSO. I, I get the, the financial constraints, but I, but we also understand and we went through last year with the, the challenges of parking enforcement and those things. And I, I would recommend bringing back another, uh, CSO. So we would have CSOs on the days, parking enforcement on the days and in the evenings, uh, from seven days a week. And I think that, that's a win-win and I think it's a solution because we have received, and I'm sure you guys have too, about all kinds of complaints about parking because it's, it's, it's difficult and it's closed down on the west side of the fire freeway. And I would like to provide those services for you, but the deputies are on calls and, and when you're marking vehicles for two hours, it's, it's not practical for deputies to return. So I, I understand that that's something you guys would have to talk about, about increasing the budget for that, but I, I, I telling you that I believe the community would definitely benefit from it.
Would, would a CSO be an ideal solution for, for T Street enforcement?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And so, yeah, and we have, I mean, the, the CSOs we have now are down there writing citations every night. But yeah, that would be in addition. So therefore you would have it day and night.
Um, Matta Mayor, is this something we could put on the agenda to talk about, uh, an additional community services officer? Is this something the city manager can do unilaterally? So?
I think, uh, this is coming at a good time. I think, uh, the captain is here because we are about to, uh, do our, uh, long-term financial plan and he always comes in and gives us these stats. So I'd like to see, um, the captain work with, um, the city manager on these proposals and talk about the budget and bring it to us. Um, I think we have a, a mid-year. Uh, I think we're looking for the end of March, aren't we, Mr. Sun? Uh, trying to get a date, uh, to start talking about the budget.
So yes, Mayor, you're correct. We're looking to do late March for the long-term financial plan. I have been working with Captain Manhart and uh, what I would plan on doing is providing, uh, as part of the proposed budget, I would be providing the decision package. Much like we have with other decision packages for the council to deliberate on whether they want this in the budget or not in the budget. And this would be one of those items that I'd be bringing forward to the council as part of that process.
Okay. Okay. So Mayor Protem, I think it kind of belongs there, uh, you know, in the process. Um, I will speak about the citizens academy, the picture that the captain showed. I actually was in that academy and we took that picture before we went into the jail. I never thought I would be in the Orange County jail, so that was quite, um, an experience, but, uh, the program is good. It's very costly. You, they have to transport all of the people there. So it's interesting to try to combine it with the other cities also. It would just mean that, uh, smaller amounts from each city would be in that group. But maybe it's not a bad thing. I don't know. Um, I heard a comment about maybe it should be kind of tailored to the residents in our city. Maybe that's a good idea, something to consider. Um, when I was in there, they tried to take us to a lot of different departments and maybe not all of those have to be done. Um, you know, it's kind of cool to see the crime lab. Um, you know, does it need to be a field trip? I don't know. So maybe, um, that is something to look at, but I certainly enjoyed the simulators and, um, uh, the morgue, uh, all of that was so interesting, but the classes that they put on at the community center uh, are invaluable to our residents who are in it to, to see what the sheriffs actually do. Um, I think those are a really big part of it that helped a lot. And so I'd like to talk about that, uh, in a part of our budget with the sheriff. Um, Mr. Noblock, I see your hand up and then Mr. Duncan.
Yes, uh, thank you, Captain Manhart. A lot of good information. Appreciate the presentation. Couple of brief questions. Uh, you mentioned that, you showed that the car thefts were way up. I'm just curious if you have any thoughts on the reason for that. And I'm wondering specifically if, uh, the opening of La Pata and sort of the back door to our city has anything to do with that.
Well, I mean, it, it's, it's not helping, but, um, the, the car thefts are related to other thefts. So what we have throughout, when I work investigations, we have noticed that a lot of criminals, what they do is they steal vehicles and then they use those vehicles to commissions of other crimes. And so what's happening is there is, you saw the, the amount of part one thefts that we have, that those are, are, are high. And so they're using the vehicles to, uh, you know, steal the items from your vehicle, then drive to the store and do those types of things. So that's, that's the significant, uh, way to, the best way to explain why it's increasing. Um, there's some tools coming down the road that, that we will present to you that, that we believe using some technology that we can, we can seriously combat that. Um, but right now is probably not the, the time to, to, to go into that.
Okay. Thank you. The last question I have is regarding the weapons violations. There's a thirty-one percent increase. I'm wondering of that thirty-one percent, how many of those are firearm related versus knives, clubs and other, other weapons?
Um, I, I don't have the exact number breakdown, but I will tell you that we had a significant amount of firearms, uh, collected by our deputies this year. So they, that was up dramatically because I was getting the reports constantly. The deputies were doing fantastic work, um, which posed a significant threat to, to the public. So there was a significant amount of firearms that were recovered.
Thank you, Captain.
Councilmember Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor Ward. Uh, Captain Manhart, thank, thank you for being here today and thank you. Uh, I'd like to say thank you, I probably on behalf of the council for your kind words about the, at the groundbreaking of the substation. That was really good to hear. It made us all feel good, I know. And also your good nature and having your image on the cake, uh, celebration after gave us, gave us a good laugh. Um, quick question on the academy. Have you found that for, for residents who may have some questions or even skepticism perhaps about, about police services activities in San Clemente, that the academy has been helpful in, in getting those, uh, questions addressed?
I, I believe so because what it does in, 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 I know, uh, Mayor Ward has, has mentioned this about, it just gives an insight to what we do and, and um, just like all of you are professionals and, and if we don't know exactly how you do your job, um, if you got to sit along with you or go through the training or, or get a briefing on it, it would give us a different perspective. And that's what we like to do is, is we, we are presented a significant amount of challenges and they're, and they're change, they're changing every year with different laws and propositions. And we just want to explain where we're at, what we are doing to, to mitigate those things. And so you have an understanding of what we are doing and, and what all we asked is if you kind of come back into the community and share that with everybody else. And hey, this is why they're doing that because I saw that in the academy. I think, I, I think it's a great tool. That's why, that's why I wanted to bring it back, just, just, just for conversation, but, because I think it is helpful. And I think that, you know, the community, we had a tremendous amount of interest in it when it was going. Um, but we, you know, the past couple of years, we've had some other challenges, but I think we're trending right. And now would be a really good time to bring it back and include the community in that.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to move or ask for support to direct staff to start looking at options, uh, for the citizens academy. Uh, including potentially the other cities. This is not a, a rush item, especially because we still got COVID restrictions. So this is probably not something that we could do, at least in the form that we would like it to be in the near future, but I don't think it's too soon to, to start, uh, putting that together, getting the financials and, uh, getting different options for council to consider.
Mr. Sun, can you, uh, comment on that? How it works with our long-term financial plan and our budget talks?
So much like my conversation, uh, Mayor, with regards to the CSO being a decision package. Uh, staff has been working with Captain Manhart, will work with Captain Manhart on some different models potentially. Seeing to see if we can do something with the cities versus something with our own. And those will come forward as a decision package as part of the proposed budget process for the council deliberator.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I also, also forgot to mention that there's one class where the, uh, the dogs come in and that's one of the favorite ones. Um, uh, just to see kind of what they do, but it, it is good. Um, it is significant amount of time, Captain. Do you remember how many weeks it is?
Well, so we have, uh, different cities have different, uh, programs and they're anywhere from twelve to fourteen, fifteen weeks. So what I would ask is when we have the discussion about what you want, then what I would do is put together the plan. So therefore you would know how, how long we would go.
Uh, Mayor Ward, with the clarification from us interim city manager that will be bringing that up during the long-term financial plan, I'll withdraw the motion for now.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, so Eric, you know, work with him on that and kind of see, I'd like to see it tailored specifically, you know, to our city and, um, and maybe pared down a little because I know they really went all out in two thousand fourteen. Um, but it is a significant amount of time and the public needs to know that they are signing up for that and making that commitment to be there. You know, if the city is going to outlay that amount in the budget and, and, you know, uh, the sheriff's staff have to plan for this, you know, so, okay.
Understood, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Captain Manhart, very much.
Thanks for having me. Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is oral communications and we do have some comments.
All right, go ahead.
First comment is from Jason Mitchell. Dear San Clemente City Council members regarding the recent unsolicited LA Times article that popped up on my iPhone yesterday. I believe Noblock and Ferguson were the only two people acting intelligently there. Gene James and the others seem to be hypocrites like Pelosi and Newsom. I've seen Gene James at Antoine's Cafe without a mask on at least twice, if not more in recent couple of months. I'm sure owner Veronica can confirm. I work across the street. He should have stood up for Laura Ferguson, not feeling it necessary to wear a mask, just like Noblock did. Gene James and the others were acting like bullies. Such a waste of everyone's time. The requirement to wear a mask was not necessary for the meeting to take place. I'm not sure why it was understood all would be wearing masks. Please don't, please don't happy hip, copy hypocrite politicians like Newsom, Pelosi and others. That's not good. It would be good to read Matthew seven, fifteen, twenty sometime. I hope you can all be better in the future and I pray that God will help you with that. God bless you. Sincerely, Jason Mitchell. Next comment is from Greg Holshizer. Dear Mayor Ward and City Council members, I've know you've heard many complaints regarding e-bikes on the beach trail and pier. I suspect you may be getting weary of these complaints. That being said, I feel it's important to share what happened last night, Friday, February twenty-sixth at the pier and to encourage you to either increase onsite park ranger presence or abandon the idea that education signage will work and ban e-bikes on the beach trail altogether. My wife and I came down to the pier around five-thirty to take a walk and watch the sunset. As has been the case with all our beautiful sunsets lately, the base of the pier, the fishermen's and the pier were bustling with people. Friends and families were enjoying the beauty that San Clemente has to offer. As we were walking on the pier near Tower Zero, a man in his late twenties or early thirties came barreling on his e-bike toward the base of the pier. He was not pedaling and was definitely going faster than twenty miles per hour. He surprised all of us and several people had to jump out of the way to avoid getting run over. He almost hit my wife. He was so close that we felt the wind caused by the e- He was so close that we felt the wind caused by the e-bike as he passed by. It really scared her and I'm sure others. Several people yelled at him to slow down. We all stared in disbelief as he paid no attention and just kept going. Thank goodness he didn't hit anyone. It would have been tragic. About ten minutes later, when we returned from our walk to the end of the pier, a group of early teenage boys came blasting through the base of the pier on their e-bikes, also not pedaling and at high speed. They had to avoid all the people watching the sunset. Yes, I know that e-bikes are to be walked in this area, but it didn't seem to matter to them. They obviously haven't been educated or if they have chose to ignore the rules again. Again, if this is, this was a very dangerous situation, one that could have been disastrous. It cannot be the lifeguard's jobs to enforce e-bike rules. Their job is to watch the water. I suspect our sheriffs have higher priorities. We need onsite park ranger or other enforcement presence, even if only in the pier area during busy times like last evening. I know you have many priorities, but this is an important safety issue. I don't think I'm being alarmist when I say it's just a matter of time until someone is seriously hurt. It can be avoided if you will take meaningful steps to make the beach trail and particularly this location safer. Education and signage will not solve the problem. People yelling at reckless e-bike riders will not solve the problem. I know that we cannot possibly provide enforcement along the entire beach trail. My preference would be to completely ban e-bikes on the beach trail. Absent your willingness to take that action, I implore you to place park rangers or others with enforcement capability at the base of the pier during busy periods. I'm happy to discuss this further at your convenience and respectfully, Greg Holzizer. Next comment is from Let Them Play. Please make accommodations to let the girls return to softball as soon as possible. Any work should have been completed prior to abbreviated season start in an annual tournament that San Clemente successfully hosts. These activities are critical to the healthy productive growth and development of our children. Next comment is from Donald, no last name provided. After Mayor Bain reside last resigned last year, the city council became a dysfunctional mess filled with childish behavior, along with sniping back and forth between the council members. I had hoped that the new council members would bring an end to misconduct and we'd have a dignified council again. I have seen the great improvement this year, which I am grateful for. Laura Ferguson is the exception. She spends more time with posturing and theatrics than actually doing what she was elected to do, which is to work for the citizens of San Clemente. The latest debacle was her refusal to wear a mask during the meeting of February sixteen. Instead of simply donning a mask like the other council members did and millions do every day, she refused and wasted a lot of time while all of the members went to other locations. The time of those who were watching online was also wasted. This delay caused the meeting to run until after midnight. To top it all off, Councilmember Ferguson posts a link to the L A Times story about her disrupt disruption as if she's proud of it. Grow up, Councilwoman Ferguson, just do what you were elected to do and quit wasting everyone's time with your games. And you'll see from the comments on your Facebook post, most of us are sick of it. Don't read them. Next comment is from Karen Leffler. At each council meeting, it has become increasingly apparent that Laura is unhappy. She is unhappy about staff, unhappy about the badge of honor which she earned. So unhappy, she threatens to sue her own city, which makes us taxpayers very unhappy. Laura is unhappy for not meeting in person stating this is extremely important, yet not that important if required to wear a mask. She is unhappy for being signaled out refusing to wear a mask. However, will wear a mask if not on camera. This makes her anti-mask friends happy. It has been clear that the only thing that makes Laura happy is to be the drama child and the press gad fly. For every meeting that she holds the public and her fellow council members hostage with her political stance and personal grievances, the threat of a toll road draws closer. Homeless issues are still unresolved. Children are not back in school and her entire community struggles under COVID. Laura, it is time that you look beyond yourself and toward those who you were elected to represent. We are very unhappy. Next comment is anonymous. I have more than one daughter that plays with San Clemente girls softball. They enjoy this time and it is a healthy way to keep them outdoors and active rather than sitting in front of their phones or TVs or worse, getting into trouble. And since it is an outdoor sport, it is much safer than many other indoor sports that are occurring or are or are there alternatives? I was outraged when I learned that the city had decided only a week or so after we were finally able to begin practicing outdoors again this season to close our home fields for six weeks for some minor repairs. This is also after my kids had not had the ability to play for over ten months due to the pandemic. And the league had been begging the city since before the pandemic to fit to fix the batting cages at the very field as those were a safety hazard. On top of that, Little League had more, most of their repairs done when sports were all closed. Baseball fields are continually repaired quickly and in the offseason softball ones are not. And now are being repaired with no regard to the girls playing. I have watched over time and it seems as though the boys leagues are treated differently than the girls, which is unfair. This coming from a parent of both girls and boys. It is outrageous. I have since recently learned that there is also now a chance that the Steve Fields may not even be ready for use for the league's annual Memorial Day tournament, which brings healthy activity and fun to our girls and also brings several other leagues and therefore tourists into the city, thereby providing advertisement and revenue to the city and its businesses. I am making the plea that if repairs are needed, they are performed in a manner that minimizes the impact on the girl's softball season and allows for them to have their annual tournament that they had to miss last year due to pandemic. Assuming it is safe to have the tournament from a health standpoint, repairs to the fields and peak softball season should not stand in the way of it or the girls having their normal spring season. Thank you. Next comment is from Brad Malamud. The city attorney Scott Smith felt compelled to call me out last night. Scott's statement that I requested B D K bills since twenty fifteen requiring redaction is false. Scott slandered me yet cowardly hid behind legislative privilege. I was not present to defend myself. Good for you, Scott. I hope you are proud of yourself. I will respond a day late. My C P R A request dated February twenty two, twenty twenty one was quote, please provide me all best best and Krieger legal bills that were provided to the legal bill reviewer, which I believe was management partners that was hired by the city to review best best and Krieger legal bills. Since those bills were presented to a third party, privilege was waived. Therefore, the city has no basis for withholding the legal bills related to the C P R A request. This won't cost the city anything because the city provided these bills recently to management partners. The request was not for all billing since twenty fifteen. Only the bills already provided to management partners, which are available at no cost to the city. B D M K review is not required. The city can save by letting staff review C P R A requests for privilege as is done almost everywhere else. Scott turned retain six hundred thousand per year into two million dollars and increased the monthly retainer from eight thousand to forty thousand dollars. Talk about inflation. Scott's legal advice continues to draw lawsuits. Scott Smith and B D K are a luxury that the city can no longer afford. The picture should be clear to council. The last R F P for legal services was seven years ago. Change is requiring new R F P. Replace B D K, bring in an in-house city attorney who can also oversee litigation and save up to one point five million per year. Thank you, Brad Malamud. Next comment is from Tony Rubellino. City council, yesterday's special meeting, there was a lot of deliberation about what is entailed to open meetings for you as well as to the public. I was curious as to what other cities were doing. So I checked in with our nearest neighbor Dana Point. I would encourage the public to go on to YouTube and search for Dana Point City Council meeting. At their most recent meeting, council was fully present without masks and with plexiglass dividers between officials. The public was able to attend and participates as well. That is leadership. Why are some council members and city representatives trying to portray council meetings as being more dangerous than say shopping at our local Target or Walmart, which are regularly packed? Mayor Ward commented wanting to follow state guidelines for a safe timeframe to open up. So is city council looking to the state level where Governor Newsom is facing a recall due to his failed and inconsistent measures, which have devastated lives and businesses throughout the state? She's more worried about staff sanitizing the microphone between public participants. Can we leave those details to our acting city manager, Eric Sun? And on that note, it's not rocket science to put in place reasonable majors such as taping off chairs to ensure distancing for the public, temperature checks at the door before entering chambers, extra hand sanitizing stations around, et cetera. Is it that difficult to put a protocol in place to wipe down a microphone between speakers? You will never eliminate one hundred percent of the risk of illness. Let people decide what risk they are willing to take in order to participate in our local city governmental operations. For those who are not ready to be live and in person, keep virtual opportunities in place. We know, we know where Mayor Ward stands on the matter. I also heard from Councilmember Ferguson and Councilman Noblock advocating to fully open up to to public meetings and be leaders in the city. Mayor Pro Tim James mentioned wanting to open in stages, but I believe that I believe that just prolongs the restriction of full public participation. Councilman Duncan seemed relatively silent on the matter. Where does he stand? We only need a majority of three to make this happen. In count, is Councilwoman Duncan looking to to Congressman Levin for guidelines on our city council meetings? Perhaps Councilman Duncan can share how concerned he is about COVID when not campaigning or in front of a city camera. We didn't elect you to be follow followers. We elected you to be leaders. Leave the city. Just today, Texas and Mississippi governors declared they will fully open for business in coming weeks. City council open up for live in-person public meetings with full public participation. Thank you. Next comment is from Donna Vadreen. Thank you. If our San Clemente Hospital is in tear down state due to neglect and lack of maintenance, the city can condemn the hospital property, proceed to eminent domain and sell the property designated and zoned for hospital use. Ask for proposals, open up the process for investors in hospitals. Memorial care are obstructionist and no one wants to engage. Our city wins because it will remain zoned and used for emergency hospital care. With the property condemned, security costs will be minimal. Donna Vadreen, San Clemente resident and homeowner. The next comment is from Amanda Quintanilla. I heard from the office of Senator Pat Bates earlier today that that they are going to review the text of S B seven sixty and S B seven sixty one because there are concerns regarding the text of the legis legislation. It's going back to the legislative staff. Section six five five six nine B mentions the exceptions of Senate Bill seven sixty one and it does not protect the city of San Clemente from the expansion expansion of Interstate five by adding four additional lanes, two on each side of the freeway. These plans have been included in alternative fourteen Route fourteen by the T C A in the past as an alternative. For reference, section B is is as follows. This section does not apply to State Route five and lands immediately adjacent to State Round five or the extension of Los Patrones Parkway as an untold county arterial highway. According, the S C T R E P S R P S D alternative fourteen would connect to I five at Avenue to Pico in the city of San Clemente where alternative fourteen connects to I five. Two lanes in each direction will be provided in the median widening I five to the outside to the county line. Alternative fourteen would transition to the existing alignment of I five in San Diego County and would end at Baseline Road. Also, alternative fourteen includes adding two hot lanes in each direction on I five from Avenue to Pico to Baseline Road just south of the county line. Two additional lanes in each direction would destroy the city of San Clemente and cut off established communities, schools, churches and businesses. These would be told lanes on the I five and that is not what San Clemente residents wanted. This would give any agency the ability to widen the I five and destroy San Clemente. Additionally, section B also excludes lands immediately adjacent to State Route five, which would include San Clemente High School lands owned by C U S D and the property next to Saint Andrews by the C U M C, which is on unstable land. Therefore, Senate Bill seven sixty one does not protect the city of San Clemente. I really don't understand why you put this on the agenda one and a half hours ago. What the city of San Clemente is doing is absolutely wrong to send it a support letter until this issue is resolved. Sincerely, Abanda Quintanilla. And that's all I have for oral communication.
Yeah, um, excuse me, Mayor Ward. May I point of clarification on some things?
Um, are they items that were?
Comments? No, I'm just gonna make a couple of comments on which I can to the uh speakers um tonight, just briefly, um the first speaker regarding the masks, um, we did more masks when we were not behind our uh protected station with the plexiglass and the ten foot industrial strength plastic curtains being more than fifteen feet apart. And uh, there were nine people in the room and I know uh that uh three others weren't wearing a mask until the cameras rolled. So um, it's important to point that out. And then Sunday, we had candidate interviews there in the last hour. We didn't wear masks at all, but um, you didn't complain then, but I was targeted because I were didn't wear my mask in my protected safe station um for the last meeting and shut down. So I did want to point that out to the the public because everyone seemed pretty safe. Till those cameras were rolling, everyone put their masks on. So um, and secondly, um regarding the uh opening up, uh, we do follow. I know a speaker was wondering if we followed the state guidelines. We don't. We follow the county guidelines. Um, and we've done that throughout COVID as a council. Um, however, uh, two things we haven't done like the county, which um, I believe we should have, but we haven't opened up. They stayed open throughout the pandemic for their board meetings to the public. And they opened up last June for business with all their county offices. So I wanted to point that out. But thank you. I appreciate the comments tonight.
Okay, Mayor Ferguson. So I I'm sorry, Councilmember Ferguson, um, I don't agree with all of your comments. It seems like you're trying to make a record of a closed session item, but um, it doesn't reflect what happened in that and you know, we just need to move on.
Excuse me, Mayor Ward, may I have a, may I ask you, what are you talking about? I didn't talk about closed session.
Can I? Can I just move on so that we can get to the business?
No, no, because you lied and we didn't talk about anything I just stated to um basically clarify some of the things that were said tonight. And I think that's helpful to the public, but we didn't talk about any of that in closed session.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, can I have a motion waiving reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances?
So moved second?
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim James, second by Councilmember Noblock.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Carrie Spivey. Next item on the agenda is closed session report, city attorney.
Uh, thanks, Mayor and council. There was no reportable action taken in closed session. Some of that might be dependent on actions of other parties discussed. Uh, we did not complete closed session, uh, existing litigation item three anthem sales and management. Uh, we didn't complete the uh public employee performance evaluation, city attorney, labor negotiations or litigation threat. So the council will reconvene uh, to the extent that it it wishes to 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 close out those items.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mayor Pro Ten.
I have multiple reports that there are racist uh comments being made on the chat feature. And if I T could take a look at what's what's going on in the chat feature, um, it's pretty, it's my understanding, it's really bad.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Ten.
Yes.
Jerks. And I was just made aware of it. If the council wants to have this discussion, there's, there's, there's two options. There's either turn off the chat or we remove those inappropriate comments, but I I would encourage the council not to remove or not to direct staff to remove them. Uh, remember, we'll be bringing this back to you as a discussion item at the sixteenth meeting. Um, but I I've received uh multiple complaints uh while I'm sitting here with regards to the profanity being used.
Your recommendation was not to remove them. I I need that repeated.
Well, there's two options. There's either turn off the chat or we can remove those posts, but I would not in recommend removing those posts as it is a free speech element. Um, but um, the 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 comments being made are are significant.
Where where are those comments? I don't see anything. Is it something that's visible on our screen?
On the on the chat.
I don't see any chat on.
It's not out. You won't be able to see it, Councilmember Noblock.
We're not going to have that on our city computers in our council meetings. So um council, I'll entertain a motion on that.
How about a discussion first, Mayor Ward?
We can have a motion first and or a discussion. It doesn't matter.
Okay. Either either order. It's fine. I just have a few things to say about uh Mr. Smith's comments.
Yes, Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Do you add this to the agenda if you'd like to discuss it? I think that it just came to your attention and you might need to deal with it tonight if you desire. So perhaps having that fourth, fifth vote to get it on the agenda at this point. you might need to deal with it tonight if you desire, so perhaps having that fourth, fifth vote to get it on the agenda at this point, and-
So we have just gone through the motion waiving and reading in full of all resolutions. The next item is consideration of agendizing items requiring immediate action. Is there any council member that would like to agendize that?
Oh, I just read the comments. Not only the comments racist in nature, but the comments are advocating violence as well.
Remove them.
You know, that's a public safety issue, and I think shouldn't be accommodating that. Um, removal, uh, is a problem because of, uh, free speech, and I wouldn't, I'm under advice of the city manager. I'm not going-
Well, interim city manager, but, and Ms. Ward, Mayor Ward, if you look at our website, like the Facebook page, um, if it's still there, I, I built the Facebook page back when we, I worked here at the city, and I did put a disclaimer in there. If there's anything in there that does, um, entertain any kind of violence, vulgarity, it's removed. They're removed, and it's- This is just awfully, excuse me, but, you're, Mayor Ward, you're, you're interrupting.
Laura, I need a motion to be able to discuss this. I asked for that.
I'll make a motion to discuss it.
I believe, I believe the city manager has new information.
So, I talked to information technology, the, the, the chat room has been, for lack of a better word, hijacked and is being barraged with these comments, so no one is able to perform chat. So based on that, my recommendation might be to turn it off. And we'll talk to OCSD, and we'll regroup at the 16th with further discussions.
Well, I, excuse me, but Mayor Ward, I made the first motion to discuss this.
I have, I have a motion to discuss it, and then I have a motion to disable it. Is, Scott, are we able to take that up at this time?
Let's get it on the agenda first and then talk disabling.
So, uh, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Ferguson has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Duncan. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock?
This motion is to discuss.
Add to the agenda.
Yes.
Mayor Protim James?
Aye.
And Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Carrie Spivey. So, let me ask about policy. Um, normally that's, uh, then added to new business. But considering what is happening, should we just take the item up now, or do we even have that option, Mr. Smith?
It's the council's discussion, uh, now or later, but I'd take this into the circumstances. You might want to dive right in.
So, uh, council, what is your pleasure? I, I, you know, I think we should take it up now.
Could we, could we have some clarification on, on exactly what's happening? Uh, Eric, our city manager said that the our, the chat feature had been taken over. Um, what, what does that mean? Are these, can we identify citizens, or is this just-
It's anonymous.
What's exactly, I saw the comments. They're pretty offensive about, you know, Nazism and all sorts of nasty stuff, but, but- verify a little bit, Eric.
We, we can't identify who they are because it's anonymous. There's no certification of identities. And they're basically just posting continuously different comments and statements, so they're basically not allowing anyone else to post because they've basically taken over the chat room. And so I'm getting multiple texts of new comments that are being loaded and just repeated and nailed to it.
So council, does anyone have a motion?
I have a motion to take it down.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mayor Protim James. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Well, we're, we're already in discussion. Oh, I see.
But we did not discuss, yeah.
Hold on, Laura. I, I-
We already voted, but Mayor Ward, we voted to have a discussion. We voted already.
Let me just-
Happy!
Laura, please. Councilmember Noblock, I understand your second, and I, I appreciate that. So for discussion now. And who would like to, to talk?
My question is regarding the motion, taking this down for a period of time for this evening.
For this evening.
Just for this evening.
At this moment.
At this moment, at this moment, because of the, the content that I've seen, if in fact, the, um, if this is someone that's taken over, just keeps hitting the click button so no one else can chat, uh, then I, then I have no problem with closing it down just for this evening. I would like to have the IT staff monitor this, and if this person gets off and people are able to communicate, then I, I, I'm concerned about shutting them down, but clearly the, the content, uh, continues, I, I can-
I think you have to just either shut it down or keep it, I don't think we'll be able to monitor it if we shut it down.
Oh, I, yeah, I understand that. It, so, you know, staffs, you know, we need to do the business of the city, and, um, we have a big agenda, and it's almost eight o'clock. So, Councilmember Noblock, would you still provide that second?
Given the circumstance, I can support the motion for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Uh-
And to clarify-
Laura, go ahead. Thanks, thanks, Mayor Ward. Um, yes, I have a question for Eric Sun. Um, Eric, uh, can't we not remove, just remove the comments? Are they coming in so fast that we just can't keep up? Because we do have the disclaimers, you know, on our social media, if it's still there, I haven't looked in a while, um, that does allow an entity, a government entity, to remove such comments. It is legal, and our city attorney can weigh in, but I, I, I do know we put that up there when I worked here. And you reviewed, uh, you reviewed it.
Number Ferguson, based on the frequency, staff cannot manage that. It's, it's either leave it on or turn it off.
Okay, it seems awfully convenient tonight, but-
Madam Mayor-
Okay, but I'm with you.
Madam Mayor, move to vote.
Yes, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock?
Aye.
Mayor Protim James?
Aye.
Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Carrie Spivey.
All right, thank you, council. So our next item is the consent calendar.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. Unless council staff or the public request removal of an item for separate discussion and action. And the public has requested the removal of items F and J.
Okay, council members, is there anyone that would like to pull an item?
D.
Wait, Mayor Protim, can you say that again?
E as in David.
E, thank you.
D as in David, and A as in Shiloh.
Say that again, A.
D as in David, and K as in Kansas.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, Sidney, Mayor Ward, I have an item. Thank you. Um, I have, uh, council minutes, number A1.
Is that all?
That's all. Other items have been pulled already. Thank you.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the balance of the consent items.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Noblock, second by Mayor Protim James.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock?
Aye.
Mayor Protim James?
Aye.
And Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Carrie Spivey.
Okay, so I think the first item is A1.
Mayor Ward?
Yes.
Sorry, may I request a brief recess before we get into these items?
Yes, I appreciate that. Uh, how about we take, uh, 10? Okay, thank-
So if staff can hear me, my screen is not clearing. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So we are back from recess and I believe we are on item A1. And that was pulled by Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes, it was. Thank you, Mayor Ward. Yeah, so the minutes, may I ask who writes the minutes? Who types these up? I'm just curious who wrote up the minutes.
I'm the one responsible for them.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Ms. Bate. And does someone approve them?
Me.
Okay, so no, no one else approves them. All right, thank you. I just want to make sure before I made my comments on what was captured from the meeting from February 16th under council comments. Under the Memorial Care Services Agreement Extension of Stand Still Period. That's on page 6A1-16. It's in the lower right-hand corner of the page. And the item wasn't a request to extend the standstill period at all. So the title does not fit what I had proposed and Councilmember Duncan had supported. Councilmember Ferguson with the support of Councilmember Duncan directed staff to agendize the possibility of extending the standstill period for the Memorial Care or Memorial Health Services Agreement. I basically had indicated we'd have a discussion on how to avoid having the $15,000 payment, the cost share be triggered if the standstill agreement had expired, which was expiring March 15, 2021. But I did not state I wanted to extend the standstill period for that agreement. So if we could revise that to match accordingly to the video or to what I just indicated right now, that would be very much appreciated.
Laura, are you trying to change the title?
I'm not rewriting history, Mayor Ward. What I'm doing is-
Looking for the change, that's all.
I'm saying it should say Memorial Health Services Agreement. Could say triggering of cost share due to standstill agreement expiring. But that, that was the gist of my reason for bringing that back. I never said I wanted to extend the standstill period. That's very two different things. And then the body needs to be-
Says that you are.
Point of order I'm speaking. The body needs to be changed as to what point of order I'm speaking.
Laura, I'm just asking for that clarification. How about it just says standstill period?
No, that's not adequate at all. That's not adequate because it was really, the focus was how to avoid the $15,000 a month cost share. So we need to make sure that that's very clear because it wasn't about extending the standstill period. But regardless, the paragraph needs to be revised and it's on the video, so.
No, I understand. So Madam Clerk, can you explain how we do our minutes that they're not they're kind of action minutes? Because I used to get into this all the time. It's like I said all these things and they're not in there. Can you explain to council, you know, how, how, you know, things get recorded in the minutes?
Well, you know, we do make mistakes. When people speak, isn't necessarily the way we understand it. That's why minutes are given to you for approval. So, you know, by all means, I want them to be correct. And I do remember 15,000 discussions, so I don't think that this would be adding something that didn't happen. I think which is a misunderstanding on our part when we wrote the minutes.
And critical to that, thank you, Ms. Bate, for answering Mayor Ward's concern on that or question. But it's really important, like, for instance, extending the standstill period, that was never an alternative for me. I gave one option that would might be considered by council as we came brought this back to discuss options of how to avoid the 15,000 a month that's not budgeted. And it was, my one example was to change the zoning. It wasn't to extend the standstill period. So I wanted to make that accurate so it's reflected in the record when they're adopted.
Laura, do you have any other changes?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, would you move that, move the item?
Yes, I would like to move the item to adopt the, let's see, are we adopting at the minutes? Adopting the minutes as reflected in my revisions, the minutes of February 16, 2021.
Is there a second?
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock? Mayor Pro Tem James?
Aye.
And Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Carrie Spivey.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is E. D, I'm sorry, as in David?
So I, Madam Mayor, I've pulled this. I would just like to understand about it and, you know, some of the Caltrans landscaping, if you come in, you know, somewhere, say, off of five, does kind of rough. And I just would like to understand what our options are. And can we invest, you know, can we invest more in that? And how do we do that? The gateways through our city look a little rough.
Sure. Go ahead, Mr. Bonniget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ward and members of the council, Tom Bonniget, Public Works Director. I think I heard in Mayor Pro Tem, two questions actually. One, briefly and more specific to the item before you is a cleanup item to deal with the landscape meeting on Camino de los Maris on the northbound side of the freeway, which we have been maintaining for decades, but we realize we don't have an agreement because it is within the Caltrans right-of-way. And so certainly recommend your approval there because it's not a new maintenance burden. And I would argue that the city provides a higher level of care on our local roadway, so we would definitely want to do that. The main question you asked, Mayor Pro Tem, is there are options to enhance landscaping along the I-5 corridor? So when the main area of the freeway is like an interchange, interchange areas and even along the freeway, if it's council's desire, there is a process that we would need to work with, with Caltrans. But in a nutshell, that involves the city funding the cost to develop whatever landscape palette and design we would like and where. And then funding and overseeing the actual installation of that. And then depending on what it is that we were to come up with, if it fits in Caltrans's general guidelines and standards, they would maintain it. But if it's a enhancement beyond their normal, you know, what they're used to and their, and their standards, then we would have to enter an agreement and also maintain it. But, but there is an option to do it.
Okay, that's something we don't need to get into this evening, but, you know, it's, it's giving me food for thought on, on something to bring up in, in the future. So with that, Mr. Bonniget, Madam Mayor, I will, I will move to, to approve and authorize Director of Public Works, City Engineer, to sign the freeway maintenance agreement for maintenance of selected portions of Interstate 5 facilities within the city of San Clemente.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock? Mayor Pro Tem James?
Aye.
And Mayor Ward?
Aye. And can I ask who seconded that motion?
Councilmember-
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to register too, that I just, I was going to pull item D for the exact same reason as Mayor Pro Tem James. But I'll defer to him there. And yeah, we can bring that up later for how we might improve our gateways in those locations in a, in a fiscally responsible way.
I appreciate that. Mr. Bonniget, can you just answer a quick question about Caltrans? We had quite a lot of problem getting them come down here with the street sweeper. I was told for years that it was broken, but I noticed this past week that I see a lot of new vehicles, including a street sweeper. And I, I don't know if you saw that, but are you aware of Caltrans coming in the area more often?
I'm not. Whether they've increased it or decreased it, I haven't heard anything in particular. We haven't, periodically, we would get complaints called into city staff about maintenance on the freeway. And we haven't lately, for whatever reason. I don't know if that's really a really great indicator of improvement or not, but you know, I, I know that they have their budget challenges too, but if they are able to provide more resources and do that, and we're seeing improvement, that's obviously a good thing. But we haven't had any particular indication that anything has changed dramatically.
Okay, I just, it, it looked like all new vehicles, so I was hopeful that they have budgeted for that. And, you know, we'll see less complaints, so. But I agree with the council members. It would be interesting to look at, at our, our off-ramps and different areas of the freeway. So thank you, Mr. Bonniget. So next item polled is item F.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is it E? Item E. And I believe that was Mayor Pro Tem also.
It was not.
Yeah, I think-
It was not?
You may have mistaken the D for an E.
I might have. So E, E was passed already. Thank you. Madam Clerk did say that.
Yes, the next item is item F. That's the Contract Award for Business and Residential Organics Diversion Implementation. And that was pulled by the public, so I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead and read that comment.
The comment is from Hoyan Ip, and she writes, Dear City Council, it's great to see the city making progress on AB 341, AB 1826, and SB 1383 compliance. I also appreciate that you had CalRecycle give a presentation on SB 1383 at the February 16th meeting. The public had a chance to learn the importance of the regulations in terms of climate and equity issues. One of SB 1383's requirements is that by 2025, edible food recovery must be increased by 20% for distribution to people in need. A well-known report, the Business and Societal Case for Reducing Food Waste by REE-FED shows restaurants and food service providers could gain the largest profit boost. Food-based solutions are a strong engine for job creation. Consumer education campaigns have the smallest cost and biggest benefit. A recent Washington Post article pointed out, average American spends about 1,300 a year on food that doesn't get eaten. Increasing composting around the globe could generate carbon savings equivalent to taking roughly 15 million passenger vehicles off the road for 30 years. Reducing food waste is one of a few climate solutions that cause almost nothing but deliver massive financial as well as environmental benefits. And I had sent UCR Club support and recommended actions for organic waste reduction, which echoes some of these points. I look forward to seeing San Clemente's outreach campaigns. Please let me know how I can help. Thank you, Hoyan Ip. That's the only public comment on that item.
Okay, is there any other council member comments? All right, oh, go ahead, Laura.
Thanks, Kathy. I guess this is a question for Ms. Mallett. Is she with us tonight? Cynthia Mallett?
Dave Rebenzendorf available to address any questions.
Oh, okay. Hi, hi there, Mr. Rebenzendorf. I wanted to just confirm and clarify that this is an RFP for, well, it was an RFP that went out just for educational outreach. We're still going to have, in compliance with the legislation, we're still going to have the Organics Diversion Program implementation. But just to clarify, is this just for the education piece and outreach? Sorry, I have children coming home from basketball right now.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Dave Rebenzendorf, Utilities Director. Yes, this is for both outreach and education of businesses and the public for the next two years so we can meet our diversion requirements defined by CalRecycle.
Okay, thank you. Is there a reason that staff can't utilize the current city resources that we have to do this outreach and educational campaign?
Staff resources are being diverted to, you know, answering public questions and other programs that are state mandated, mandated such as the waste diversion requirement for building materials. That's a program that's being administered by, by our staff. So we, we just, it's limited resources to get this done. And this is a, a two-year push to really get the, the program in place. And then the hopes is that it will kind of run on its own from there as we meet, as the public gets more educated and understands how to get to utilize and dispose of its organic materials.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Noblock? Councilmember Noblock, it doesn't show that you're blocked, but we can't hear you. I thought it was just me.
Your mic might not be on.
Oh, thank you.
I apologize.
Oh, good.
My comment was simply that I had similar concerns. This is a program that is going to be ubiquitous in California. The programs will probably be identical because they've been identified by statute. It's education. We're going to have a green bin. We're going to have probably a flyer in our bills that say this is the program. Put your, your, your organic waste at this particular, in this bin and, and keep doing it. To spend $100,000 on a consultant to basically copy what every city in the state of California has to do and has a year in which to do it. I, I just think that that $100,000 would be spent better elsewhere, so that's my comment.
Mr. Rebenzendorf, would you like to address that?
Yeah, it's, it's not just, you know, putting information out to the public. The, the consultant or action research will be going out to businesses to meet with owners and proprietors to provide education and outreach. There's over, I think Ms. Mallett had missed, mentioned there were over 110 businesses that are currently not in compliance. So we have written letters and so this will be additional outreach by going to those businesses. And that, that would be a portion of it as well.
And is the city required to make personal visits to these businesses, other than communicating them through mass communications like their, their trash bill?
They, the city is not required to go out to the businesses, but it has shown, at least with other agencies, to be an effective way of gaining compliance. If the city does not meet its requirements, the city could be subject to fines in the future.
And the requirements are not, are simply that people be notified and do their, do their, what they should be doing. I know when we had the recycle requirement, we, we, the, the city far exceeded the, the number, percentage of recyclable material that needed to be sent to the dump. I suspect the same will be true with the organics. I just think the, this isn't a requirement. And I, I just am concerned with the expenditure on something that is ubiquitous and is as straightforward as this program legislatively is. So those are my thoughts.
Laura, go ahead.
Mayor Ward, thank you. If I may follow up on that too, is, is that we should, you know, if this, any future or, or any current budget expenditures are being considered, we really need to include those in the upcoming budget for discussion because this wasn't approved, to my knowledge, in the current budget that was approved for fiscal year 2021. Or was it, Mr. Rebenzendorf?
It was not in the current budget. Staff was receiving some pressure from CalRecycle to make improvements in our program. And we do have a funding source from CRNR for outreach. And so the funds are being utilized from this reserve that's established and kept by CRNR.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Duncan?
Yeah, well, I, I would support this. I, I actually think the public's not- Uh, I, I actually think the public's not that aware of the green ways for cycling. It's kind of new, and um, I think still people are throwing a lot of food away in their regular garbage. And, and I think, um, businesses may not, may not be aware as well, so I think we all need to move in this direction, and, and so I would support this.
Okay, so, um, this was polled by the public. So, I'll entertain a motion. Uh, Mr. Duncan, is that a motion?
Yes, I'll, I'll move to approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of nine, $93,055 from the Solid Waste Management Fund to account And approve and authorize the city manager to execute contract C21-06 by the City of San Clemente and Action Research, providing for, uh, implementation of a business and residential recycling and organics diversion program for a two-year term in the amount, in an amount not to exceed $93,055.
Motion by Councilmember Duncan. There a second? I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, can you take the roll call vote?
I, I would, I have some questions, I have a few questions.
Uh, I can't tell who that's coming from.
James.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Rebenzendorf, what happened? Oh, there you are. I, I had to find you in my, on my, on my screen. What, what is the downside to us not approving this, this $93,000?
I, I guess the downside is if we don't meet our diversion goals, then the, the city could be subject to fines by Cal Recycle. So, whether the city would just pay those fines or pass those on to the consumers, that would be um, a decision the, the city council would have to make sometime in the future.
Do you need this $93,000 to make this program work?
Uh, according to my staff and the research I've done, um, it's, it's obviously before the council tonight, and we recommend it to give the program a boost. And to, you know, get the education material and outreach out there to um, our customers, um, so we can, you know, meet, meet these goals. Um, if we, you know, we can, if we far exceed the expectations, we can always reduce the, uh, the contract in the latter years. But, um, you know, because it is a, a two-year contract.
So, you'd be coming to us two years from now with, requesting the same, the, the, the same contract be renewed?
Uh, the hope would be in two years, um, that we would gain compliance, and this would just become a, a way of life for residents in the community and the public in the state of California. And so, we wouldn't need to come back, and we would be meeting, um, our customers would be meeting their diversion goals.
I'm sorry, it sounded like an interrogation, it wasn't meant to be, but I'm just trying to wrap my head around this, sir, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Additional question for, for Dave, if I could?
Yes, go ahead.
Dave, would it also be possible that if, if the community was meeting the requirements, and we didn't spend the $100,000 approximately, they were meeting their compliance, that we wouldn't need to spend it, and we found out they weren't meeting it, we could always come up and ramp up the education communication model if needed at a future time?
Absolutely, that can be done.
Yeah.
So, I think we just had Cal Recycle present to the council, and this is a program that, um, they did stress that we are required to meet it. And I think with the businesses, that is a big portion of, um, of the goal, and I think going out there just to try to organize the businesses and how they do this, if you think of where their, their receptacles are, I, I think it's going to be, it's going to take some education, and staff may have to work out how they do it. Just because not all the businesses have room. So, I think that's going to be a, you know, an issue, especially with downtown.
Mr. Re-
Go ahead.
Can I ask one more question? So, when, when you're dealing with the restaurants, are, do the independent operators, they get it better than the chain operators, or the chain operators have processes and procedures in place?
That's a good question. I, I have an outreach directly to them, I would defer that question to Ms. Mallett, I think she's on the call here as well.
Yes, I'm here, this is Cynthia, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, go ahead.
Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, yes, the restaurants are one of the key outreach target audiences for this program. Partly because they are going to have to set up both trash, recycling, and organic diversion. The easier, um, restaurants will be the sit-down restaurants, because you really only have to train the employees of the restaurant on how to sort the material. It's going to be quite a challenge for the restaurants where the public is throwing away their food in the dining room. So, really, the patrons are going to have to basically bust the table themselves, and when they approach the different bins, they're going to have to figure out which bin to, which material to put in which bin. And that is why we want to hire this firm, because they have the ability to identify the barriers that the employees, as well as the public, are going to come upon to sort out the material and help guide the restaurant owners and operators on developing signage that is easily understood for the public to be able to sort the material. And that is just a lot of work and above, kind of beyond the staff level at this point in time. So, our goal is, in the next two years, is to get this outreach a lot to the restaurants, so that we can get that signage up. Uh, and then after the two years, this would be a program that would be able to be manageable by the city staff. We would not be looking at having, uh, a, a firm doing any more of this outreach. And they would also, the firm would also provide like a guidance document for city staff on how to reach out to the restaurants and other businesses that are going to have to divert organic materials as well. And so that we wouldn't have to hire a firm in the future.
Ms. Mallett, you, you, you hit a home run there. I, 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 I knew the answer, but you brought clarity to, to, to what I already knew. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we had a motion by, uh, Councilmember Duncan, and can you remind me who seconded that motion, if there was a second?
You did.
Uh, I didn't remember, okay, second by Mayor Ward.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
No.
Councilmember Noblock?
No.
Mayor Protem James?
Aye.
Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Carries three, two.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rebenzendorf and Ms. Mallett, for your contribution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is item J, that's Contract Amendment, Homeless Outreach Services. And we do have, um, comments on this item. First comment, um, excuse me, let me go ahead and read the comment. First comment is from Tony Rubellino. Our history of homeless outreach services have proved to be one glaring disappointment after another. Private citizens exposed fam is giving goods needing to be cooked being taken by recipients into the canyons at their encampment. A video of an individual who appeared to be under the influence also was filmed being provided with goods from our local fam facility. Then Mercy House came along, and we were dazzled with terrific presentations. Shortly afterwards, a playful hashtag was populated in local social media forums, asking where the employees in their contract with the, in their contact with the transient population. Nobody could seem to find them. Now, we are on to CityNet, and, correct me if I'm wrong, one of their employees during a recent presentation to council was asked a question by Mayor Protem James, and he responded with beaming pride on the success of permanent supportive housing. Council, the permanent supporting housing model is a complete and utter disaster. It has failed time and time again. If CityNet supports this direction, they shouldn't be aligned with, with, are supported by the, aligned with or supported by the City of San Clemente. I would encourage you all to vote no on the contract extension to CityNet for homeless outreach services. In this charade, it won't be long before a city employee is hired for the new outreach position. At that point, we can have someone who is accountable to the city, and when asked to provide specific metrics and data, should be able to comply without delay. Thank you for your time. Next comment is from Dawn of a Dream. Please continue the contract with CityNet Outreach Services until the city adopts a comprehensive strategy for the homeless in San Clemente. Without continuing the contract with CityNet, outreach services in San Clemente would be reduced until the outreach services coordinator is hired and boots are on the ground. CityNet's service to our city has been limited by lack of resources provided by the city council and city leadership. They are contracted for three days to provide outreach services. There are no shelter options in San Clemente for the homeless sleeping and dying on our sidewalks and public spaces. We can and must do better for the homeless, residents, business owners, and tourists in our city. Please accept our call to action. Provide overnight shelter, a safe parking program for those individuals and families sleeping in their cars, a day center for coordination services, coordination of services, bathrooms to meet the basic needs of toileting. San Clemente has avoided and obstructed sensible solutions for our homeless. It's time for action and leadership. Dawn of a Dream, San Clemente resident, business owner, and a member of the San Clemente Homeless Collaborative. And that's all for public comments.
Okay, councilmembers? Is there any comments or a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead and read that, or we can just make a motion?
Okay, um, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the staff recommendation for, uh, the contract amendment with CityNet.
All right, motion by Councilmember Duncan. There a second? I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson?
No.
Councilmember Noblock?
No.
Mayor Protem James?
No.
Mayor Ward?
Aye.
Uh, the motion fails two to three.
Okay, so, council, do you have, uh, any substitute motion? It's leaving our city without a homeless outreach for almost a month. I believe, unless someone has other information.
Yeah, I've got to say, I'm a little confused, this is just, just a month, uh, until we get our homeless coordinator online. We've had CityNet for, what, a good while now? Whether you like what they've done or not, I think providing that continuity until we get our own coordinator on the ground is important, it's, and it is just a month.
Yeah, I'm not sure why we're, we're leaving that unfilled for a month.
I have no comp-, uh, Madam Mayor, if, if, if I may, uh, I mean, my, my statement's fairly short here. Uh, I think, uh, the public comment from Mr. Rubellino, uh, pretty close to, to, to my position. I have no confidence in, in, in CityNet, I haven't seen any impact of what they've done on the street, and I'm particularly concerned uh, with their, their support and advocate, and advocating for permanent supporting hous-, permanent supportive housing in, in San Clemente. I'm all for working with our other cities, our, our neighbors, and, 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 and working on emergency shelter somewhere. But I, I simply have not seen the, any impact that CityNet has done, and all you have to do is walk down Del Mar on any day of the week and, and see their effectiveness.
Mr. Sund, who is it that, uh, handles that contract, that could speak to that tonight?
So, you have Cecilia Gardeau-Daly, um, uh, Community Development Department, that, uh, is over, it's contacted as well as myself.
Okay, so, Cecilia, could you make some comments, you've heard the concerns?
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Noblock.
My point of order is that, uh, this matter has been heard, uh, there was, it wasn't approved, there's no additional motions on the floor.
Thank you.
On to the next item.
Mr. Noblock, I would like to ask the question myself, so I'm asking for more information. We do have a motion, and, and I agree it was voted on, but I, I'm just asking for comment. I didn't realize staff was here to comment on it.
Who cares?
Laura, did you just say who cares?
No, I didn't, that was my son. Sorry.
He needs to be out of the meeting.
No, he's, he's, it's my home, and my son can be here, but he can say what he wants, it's my home, so until we open up with the people, you get my house, my life, my cats, my kids, that's how it goes, so let's open up, Kathy. But yes, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Noblock, that we've already voted, and this has happened a couple of other times since you've been mayor. You, you know, it doesn't go your way, so you try to, uh, take it over and, and discuss again, and start the process all over again, and it's got to stop.
I'm not starting anything over, I'm just asking a question. I haven't made any motions or doing any-
Fair enough.
Stop a question. So, Cecilia, can you, um, please talk to us about what the impacts would be if, uh, we don't have outreach for the month? I think that's a, a good question to ask.
Yeah, so the intent in, um, bringing this contract extension forward for a month, um, because the CityNet contract did expire at the end of February, was simply to have little or no disruption in homeless outreach services while we work to fill the community outreach worker position, so this means that, um, we won't have CityNet working for us, um, in San Clemente.
So, could you, uh, provide who people are supposed to call? Then, would it go to the sheriff's office? Or to fam? You know? Do we even, um, if we don't know it, then I would ask you to come back.
211.
And provide that to the public?
Yeah, no, I think that's a, that's a great question, and I think, um, the public can benefit from some information from city staff on this issue. The presentation by CityNet earlier, um, did identify that the public can call 211 if there is an issue or concern, um, that needs to be addressed. So, we'll be relying on that, um, until we can fill our community outreach worker position.
Okay, so I would be making that request that we do put something out, uh, to provide notice on that, and then put it on our website. Okay?
Yes, we can do that.
Mr. Sund, go ahead.
So, grant on Mercy House to provide South Orange County mobile outreach. So, Mercy House is in the city, maybe one to two miles. Yeah, it's a county for that contract, so they're not under a contract with the city, they're under a contract with the county. However, they provide mobile outreach services, but to Community Development Director P. Gardeau Bailey's point, 211 is the main portal, and then that goes to the county of Orange, which has been working for on a very limited part time.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, I appreciate that. I was doing this for, um, the public's benefit, so that they would know. So, thank you, Cecilia. Uh, next item that was polled?
Next item is item K, that's fiscal year 2021 mid-year budget adjustment.
Madam Mayor, I, I pulled that, uh, I would like to get a, a briefing from Mr. Ron or, or some interim city manager. Son, I, I think there's mostly good information here.
I'll, I'll start off, and then Jake can fill in the holes. So, the primary message to the mid-year adjustments is a couple of things. A, we've already communicated with the council on monthly financial reports that are sales tax.
Excuse me, Mr. City Manager, could you speak a little closer to the mic, it's very difficult to hear.
Can you hear me now, sir?
Yeah, this is much better, thank you.
Good. So, uh, I'll back up, so we have a couple of points to convey with regards to the mid-year adjustment, and we've done this during our monthly reports. A, sales tax is exceeding expectations, and property tax is exceeding expectations, and the example I'll give is we just recently got reported on our quarter four for 2020, which is the last three months of calendar year 2020, October, November, December, so it's the Christmas holiday timeframe. Uh, we took in $1.2 million of sales tax, whereas that same quarter in 2019 was $100,000 less, we took in about a $1.1 million. So, I've made this comment before, and so we're consistent, well, yes, there are some categories going down in sales tax, there are many that are exceeding sales tax projections, and many of those transactions are attributed to online transactions versus brick and mortar. Now, with that said, those revenues are doing quite well, exceeding- Now, with that said, those revenues are doing quite well, exceeding forecasts within our budget. However, one revenue category we knew was going to be affected was the revenue categories for the city in terms of room reservations, class rentals, and programming where we can't do that in light of the pandemic. And so what Jake's put together tonight is addressing that revenue shortfall. But at the same time, we are not incurring part-time dollars to fund those programs. So we're not spending the expenditures for that. So as you'll see in the report, we have an adjusted operating revenue position of sixty six point four, and we have an adjusted operating expenditure of sixty six point four. So we're right breaking even. Uh, one of the things I think it's important to also convey as it indicates in the discussion of this report, after the proposed adjustments, the general fund unassigned fund balance is projected to total approximately four point four million at the end of the year twenty 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 one. So we're seeing that we're going to close out with a good fund balance, and that fund balance always funds your one times, whether it's capital improvement projects or other one-time costs. And so really, you know, we're, we're in a good spot. We're obviously not going to put our heads in the sand, and we're going to be diligent in terms of monitoring as we always ha- has been. And we're going to be conservative in those uh forecasts as we have always been. But um I'm proud to say, and I've had a number of other cities talk to us that say, I wish I was in the same boat as San Clemente. We're in a good situation uh as we're coming out of this pandemic, hopefully in twenty twenty one. Uh, Jake, you want to add anything to that?
Um, no, again, we've been trying to keep council updated through the, the monthly updates and kind of touch on the things uh that we're going to need to be adjusted. Again, we've kind of talked about treasury or the transient occupancy taxes, the service charges, the rentals. And you'll see those kind of broken out separately in the report. And then we also uh updated council that, yes, there were going to be some salary savings and then some contract services. We're going to be lesser, and some of the contract class instructors were going to be less. So uh again, it's kind of a little bit of a balancing act, and we just tried to be uh both conservative and realistic in the approaches we're going, trying to get through this fiscal year. So with that, I can address any other questions the council might have.
I have a quick question. Um, uh, this one's for Jake. Hi, Jake. Um, I just wanted to ask you, did we fully replenish the half a million dollars that um was assigned for the COVID? Was it fully replenished yet?
Uh, no, that's still in the disaster relief fund. Uh, right now, I want to say we probably have about three hundred thousand dollars left in that disaster relief fund. And some of that's still being spent. Uh, again, they're doing the playground sanitizing, and there are other little costs that are going on that we're charging through. But uh I would anticipate, anticipate that we have enough funds to make it through this year uh without any issues. So.
Okay, I'm, thank you. And if I may just clarify, um, I know the city had allocated half a million and that we were receiving um federal and state funds to replenish.
Yeah, that's correct. And we, we had basically advanced funded it with five hundred thousand, and we've been also using those to because some of that came from the general liability and some of it came from the general fund. So we were going to use that to help pay for some of the costs that were incurred.
Okay, so it's about two hundred thousand left to replenish, you're saying?
Um, essentially, we've spent two hundred thousand of the five hundred thousand.
Okay, perfect.
And again, we're spending it on sanitizing the playgrounds and doing other things like that to help uh uh keep things sanitized properly and uh keep those activities going.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Councilmember Duncan.
A quick question either for the interim city manager or for Jake. I think I got word that we're in the fourteen days of maybe going to the red tier. Uh, in any event, hopefully we'll be moving towards coming out of uh COVID and lifting more restrictions. Do we? Do we anticipate that as we close out the fiscal year that we will see a, a, a significant increase in our, in our T O T, sales tax, and other tourist-type revenue to uh to kind of get the local economy going?
I'll, I'll, I'll take that, Councilmember Duncan. Yes, the short answer is yes. The one thing that T O T has always shown us is it's seasonal. And one of the things in a number of cities, I'll, I'll say a number of destination cities are experiencing high, high amounts of uh vacation rental usage because of the pandemic. Uh, with or without the pandemic in the summertime of San Clemente, our STLUs and our T O T attributed to that are very, very good. And so I think, you know, with the potential of the pandemic coming off in twenty twenty one, people will want to go somewhere and get out and kind of, you know, try to return back to normal. So we do anticipate seeing that T O T rebound as we enter the spring uh season and into summer.
Let's make sure they come here.
Yes, sir.
Is there any other council comments?
I, I will move to approve the staff recommendation, approve and authorize the mid-year budget adjustments identified in attached A of the administrative report dated March the second twenty twenty one.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem James, second by Councilmember Duncan.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Hey, the next item, moving on to new business, is the warrant register.
Motion to approve the warrant register and payroll register.
So you have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Noblock. Thank you.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
World Communications Part Two, do we have any more? Okay, we do have comments.
First comment is from Debbie Flowers. Good evening, council members. Why all of a sudden is the IT department able to turn off the chat during?
Excuse me, madam clerk, could I, could I ask you to please speak? I, I have difficulty hearing you. You speak closer to the mic, please.
First comment is from Debbie Flowers. Good evening, council members. Why all of a sudden is the IT department able to turn off the chat during tonight's meeting when they were unable to turn on the chat during the February sixteenth twenty twenty one city council meeting? Interim city manager Sun stated that the meeting had begun. The chat could not be enabled. It just goes to show that Mr. Sun lied because he didn't have a problem disabling tonight's chat in an instant. I find this highly suspect. Next comment is from Stephen Marshall. Something needs to be done about the chat feature. The comments earlier were distracting and disgusting, but so were comments in the chat before. The chat is really just a circus, a circus show for Laura Ferguson supporters. Why do you think she wants to keep it so bad? To delete individual comments would truly invite more unnecessary litigation. Think about this. There's a very real possibility that these fake accounts tonight were ACLU lawyers baiting you. Get rid of the chat feature altogether. People want to exercise freedom of speech. They can have their three minutes just like it always has been. And that's all for public comments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, next item is city manager.
Um, so thank you. I'll be very brief. So two points that I wanted to make, uh, the council had directed staff to come up with a portal to report near misses or accidents related to e-bikes in the city of San Clemente. Um, I'm happy to say, and I want to thank IT and uh BPR specifically for their efforts. That portal is now up, and you can get to that link on our latest news. And what it offers is an anonymous uh process of uploading your concern, your observation, and/or an image. And as council has just uh instructed, we'll be coming back and reporting on that uh information as we move forward. So there's that. And then the other good piece of news, and I really want to give a, a kudos where kudos are due to our economic development officer, Jonathan Lightfoot, the city's C D B G small business grants. Awardies have been notified, and we'll be, we'll, we will be direct sending out the grant agreements and direct deposit forms this week. Once these agreements are received, we'll route for signature. We will be awarding thirty seven grants for a total of two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. And so I'm really, really proud of Jonathan and our consultant Teresa Dobbs, who went through all of the applications. And I can tell you that this is a great milestone for the city in terms of doing some economic relief over a quarter of a million dollars to local businesses. And so I applaud Jonathan, and I just wanted to let the council know on that update. And that's all I have at this time.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for the city uh interim city manager.
Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Um, earlier this week, uh, excuse me, last week, you uh published a letter in regards to alcohol sales and sidewalks. Can you, in the sidewalks, can you elaborate on exactly what, what that means?
Thank you for bringing that up, Mayor Pro Tem James. So as you recall, when the city, well, excuse me, when the state went into the the, the revised stay-home lockdown order in December, all restaurants were not able to utilize outdoor dining or indoor dining. Uh, so the city um took the initiative through the emergency proclamation process to allow restaurants to, to take out with alcohol to public spaces, parks, and so forth. Once the state put the county of Orange back into the purple tier, outdoor dining was brought back to our restaurants. And so with that change, the city then have, has basically rescinded that emergency order because now patrons can take dine in, excuse me, dine outdoors with alcohol, and there is no need for that additional outlet for the businesses. So that was rescinded this week. Uh, we've communicated to businesses, and some businesses have had some questions that we've worked with to clarify what they can and can't do, and we've seen no issues at this time, sir.
Thank you. And, and so to be clear, you can still have alcoholic beverages and enjoy a meal at a table on a sidewalk or.
That is correct.
Um, and then one follow-up to that is I think we have to look beyond the horizon and look in July, August, September, when hopefully we're, we're out of this hope, all this nonsense that we're going through. And outdoor dining has been such a success in San Clemente and has made San Clemente, I would say, a destination for, for, for diners. Um, are we putting together plans to have a long-term outdoor dining in San Clemente? And will those plans have to involve the A B C?
So first off, uh, yes and yes. So council has already given previous direction, actually the prior council. And so Jonathan is working on those initiatives, one of them being, for instance, at the pier bowl to extend the sidewalk by the pier bowl to create more outdoor dining space and come back with a, a lease program, if you will, for businesses to lease that space. The other action item was the parklets or the outdoor dining spaces. As council had directed, we'll be looking at standardization and some different options. And yes, we're going to be looking at providing that long term so that the businesses will feel comfortable with that investment because it is a significant investment for the restaurant or restaurants. And then, uh, lastly, the other action was also on El Camino Real, like for instance, in the area of Tamarindo and Brick to look at some options there to extend the sidewalk and take some of the public parking away so that they can have those options as well. Because we've talked about this, El Camino can be a little bit dangerous with the speed and the proximity to pedestrians. So that'll be coming back to the council. That is a long-term goal the council has given us direction on.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
And Mayor Ward, if I may, please.
Uh, I, are you asking a question of the city manager?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Thank you. Um, Eric, uh, back to the uh e-bikes and the reporting of any near misses or accidents. Um, how are you getting the information out to people about the portal for reporting?
We, we will eventually do a press release. Um, I just wanted to announce it tonight to let the council know so that you could communicate to your constituents that it's available, but we will be getting a press release out in the coming business days.
Okay, are we going to do any kind of uh signage down by the trail? Where we're, we seem to have some issues tonight reported.
We'll probably, it's a good question, Councilmember Ferguson. I think one of the things that we'll be looking at, working with the R S V Ps at the pack house with regards to having them be able to provide some education, uh, we'll have some signage that will be there, but for bikes to be walked. And we'll, we'll look at incorporating some type of want of being able to direct people to go to that portal. While it won't be a permanent portal, we'll probably have some temporary signage that can direct people to that as well as social media posts. And then
Wonderful.
Part of the PSAs that we'll be doing with O C S D uh for e-bike safety, that will be integrated into that education as well.
Oh, that's excellent. All right. Thank you very much.
Next item is city attorney.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. I don't have anything to add tonight.
Madam Mayor, I have a question with the city attorney.
Yes, Ma- Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
Um, going back to uh Mr. Malamud's uh public comments earlier in regards to management partner and the audit. Did, have we waived our, 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 our privilege there? Are, are those documents no longer privileged?
Uh, no, that's the argument. Um, our firm has uploaded to them every paper, every page of every bill that we ever sent the city since our original engagement. So that's why I said everything's in play. And uh the argument made, uh, oh, and by the way, they are engaged as adjunct staff to the finance department, and they're subject to a very strict and very thorough confidentiality agreement with the city. The argument made is that somehow giving these documents to them as the city's agent made those documents public knowledge, and nothing could be farther from the truth.
Thank you.
Is there any other council comments? Go ahead, Mr. Noblock.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I'd like to uh have the council consider agendizing at the next meeting a request to establish a one-year pilot program to have a dog beach, a portion of our beach designated for dog use. Uh, I've prepared a draft resolution, which I've given to the city clerk to be uh available to the council members uh with the, with the particulars. Uh, but you know, we have sixteen thousand dog owners in the town, and they have to drive to Newport Beach and other cities to enjoy time on the beach. So I'm recommending this pilot program on a limited portion of our beach, maybe a five, six hundred feet stretch uh which would be designated liable for dogs. So that's my request to agendize that at the next meeting.
I'll support that.
Okay, so you have a second on that. Um.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are, are we in council member comments now?
Yes, thanks. Sorry about that.
So in recent years, the California Legislature has proposed and passed numerous bills relating, relating to the state's housing prices. Many of these bills have eroded local control over zoning and housing issues. I would like to propose that we agendize a, a discussion at our March sixteenth meeting in which we formally express the city's opposition to this practice and convey its intention, explore ways, protect the ability of cities to retain local control over zoning matters. This exact resolution has been passed by forty cities in California to include Newport Beach just last week. So if I could get a second on that, I would, I'd like to bring this back.
I would enthusiastically support that second, Mayor Pro Tem.
And can I ask for clarification? Are you requesting staff bring back a letter? I would, uh, a letter of what we're going to be sending so that we can.
Yes.
We can okay that. Okay, so I would agree with that. Um.
I can work with the city managers. There's going to be very little staff work associated with this.
Okay. I think that is a great idea. Hopefully it mentions something about H C D and uh overcounting the numbers for our region. But I'm interested in seeing that.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Duncan.
Uh, I'd just like to note, we have uh a, a week or so left for the comment period uh with, on the train horns issue. We've got a press release out on this. Mayor Pro Tem James and I have been working very hard to, to find some relief for this. And uh we, we're cautiously optimistic at this point about getting that heard before the F R A's safety board in March. But the more comments, I think, the better from the public. And if I could, I would urge you to emphasize the safety of our pause system, of our pedestrian alert warning system. That's the basis for our waiver. That's really what uh, what F R A, what's going to move F R A is the safety part. So please, when you make those comments, emphasize that we have been safe. We have not had incidents in San Clemente, at least in recent memory, with the at least in recent memory with the system in place with the waiver that we've had for five years. Please do make those comments. I think it's March 12th is when the comment period ends. Interim City Manager can confirm that. But please do get those comments in. We won't have another meeting, at least a regular meeting before then. So we won't have another chance to urge you to do that.
Okay, I'm not seeing any further council comments. Oh, go ahead, Laura.
I do. Thanks. Thanks, Kathy. I have one I wanted to bring on the agenda, but I just made a notation because I was thinking the concession leases that Mayor Protim James had requested at one of the meetings was going to be on this agenda. Mayor Protim James, is that going to be on March 16 for all the concession leases for the city? Because I'll save this item for then if needed.
Staff is bringing back a report and a presentation to the council. I believe it might be the second meeting in March or the first meeting in April, but it is coming back and staff is finalizing that report.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I will save this item for then because I think it fits well there. And then another item, I'm just waiting to hear back from community development on. I'll propose it probably next time. Thank you, Mayor Ward.
All right, so that is the end of council comments.
The next item is item 12A. This is the second reading of ordinance 1711 concerning the use of bicycles, including electric bicycles on the beach access road, beach and beach trail.
Is there any comments by council?
Madam Mayor, it's my understanding, as I read through this, the only thing it really, this ordinance really does is identifies e-bikes as an entity, as a e-bikes were not addressed in the prior ordinance and now we're addressing e-bikes in this ordinance. Is that correct, Mr. Sun?
Yes, the majority of these changes are definitional, definitional changes within the municipal code.
I'm ready to make a motion on this.
Okay, so before we do that, I would just like to state that we did receive a few comments of complaints. I forwarded those complaints to Samantha Wiley and she was going to make sure that they they were recorded. I am concerned. I remain concerned on this issue. But I wanted the public to know that at any time, I think what the council said at the prior meetings, we're going to try to do an educational blitz on this, but at any time that we feel that there are too many incidents that the council can take it up at any time. So we encourage the public to please use that portal and we'll be getting that out. The word Samantha, did you have anything to add or you're just here for questions?
Just here for questions if there's anything further.
Okay, thank you. I believe the Mayor Proton was ready to read the ordinance.
Doc ordinance number 1711 entitled in ordinance of the city council of the city, San Clemente, California, amending section 12.32.130 of the San Clemente municipal code relating to the use of bicycles, including electric bicycles, class one and class two and class three, other activities on the pier, beach access road, beach and beach trail.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Proton James, second by Councilmember Noblock.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock.
Aye.
Mayor Protim James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Three, five, oh.
Madam Mayor, motions for adjournment.
Actually, I think we're going to recess to closed session. And Madam Clerk, can you clarify, are we going to have to come out of closed session in order to adjourn?
That would be a question for the city attorney. Will there be an announcement?
Yeah, I think we want to do that. We wanted disclose what we decided about the composition of the discussion on item H. I think Councilmember Ferguson will want to, will want to make that real clear whether she was in or out. And so what, yeah, just briefly, we'll need to come back.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. So I need a motion to recess to closed session.
Motion to recess closed session.
Mayor Protim James, is there a second?
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock.
Aye.
Mayor Protim James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
Three, five, oh.
Mayor, that's the phone access again, right? Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I am seeing just two council members, is that correct? Oh, now I see more. Okay, so this meeting is back in from closed session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, Mayor Council, there was no reportable action taken if I could just get that on the record.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
I move to adjourn to the next regular council meeting scheduled to take place on March 16th, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Duncan, second by Mayor Potem James.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilor No Block.
Oh, did you say my name?
Yes.
Aye.
Mayor Potem James.
Aye.
And Mayor Ward.
Aye.
And Councilmember Ferguson is absent.
Okay, thank you. Good night, everyone.